Heavenly Father, we'd like to thank you for giving us the courage and strength to answer our daily problems. Guide us with your wisdom to help us make the proper decisions tonight for our community. We pray for the safety of everyone in our community and the world from the many conflicts that we suffer. Be with especially with the ones that are now suffering with COVID. Protect them from harm and be with them and comfort them at this time of year. Yes, get them down there.
Please rise for the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have before you your agenda package. And so with that, are there any adjustments to the agenda? And if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda before you?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, there's a motion to approve.
I say again.
There's a second motion by Ms. Sledge, second by Ms. Hobus. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right, so the agenda is adopted as presented. And we will now move to our next item. We will do recognitions, but the first item before the recognitions is consideration of Resolution 21 dash zero two one in recognition of Mr. Ronnie Smith in his efforts to establish Spencer's Yadkin River Trailhead. So I will read the resolution at this time. Whereas the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Spencer is a representative municipal governing entity greatly appreciates the leadership generosity and enthusiasm of Mr. Ronnie Smith for his efforts to create and establish the Yadkin River Trailhead. And whereas the town of Spencer largely due to the efforts of Mr. Smith, recently acquired surplus right-of-way formerly a portion of the abandoned US Highway 29 property from the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And whereas Mr. Smith helped to convene the Yadkin River Dream Park or Yadkin River Park Dream Team to conceptualize and plan a program of work that utilizes the surplus right-of-way for a proposed pedestrian bicycle trailhead connecting Spencer and Rowan County to the historic Wilcox Bridge and outdoor recreation facility owned by the county of Davidson. And whereas under the auspices of his charitable organization Friends of Rowan, Mr. Smith has demonstrated considerable generosity and financial support to the town of Spencer by making significant monetary contributions to design and in the near future build this important linkage which will connect future trail, greenway, and blueway corridors, specifically the proposed Third Street Greenway Corridor, the Carolina Thread Trail, the Piedmont Legacy Trail, and the Yadkin River State Trail. And now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the board of aldermen that the mayor and board of aldermen of the town of Spencer firmly and unanimously adopt this resolution in recognition of Mr. Ronnie Smith for his leadership generosity and enthusiasm in his efforts to establish the Yadkin River Trailhead in Spencer, North Carolina. So that is Resolution 21 dash zero two one for the board's consideration. Is there a motion to adopt?
A move that we adopt.
There's a motion by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. All in favor? All right, all opposed. And that resolution is unanimously approved. And with that, we would like to ask that...
I'm gonna take a picture of you when you...
All right, very good. We're gonna ask Mr. Ronnie Smith to come forward.
Thank you, sir. Mask on. We want to represent this. This is amazing. This is so wonderful.
Ronnie, thank you very much. We really appreciate all you have done and continue to do for us.
One more.
Thank you, fellas.
You see I'm smiling. You should give me my two and a half or one minute.
I'm gonna give you three.
Three minutes. Three minutes. I don't know what to say, really. This is totally unexpected and not necessary by any means. I'm tumultuous. No wonder Joe insisted that I get here. He said, "You'll be here tonight because we're gonna talk about some important things." So God bless Joe. And he called me and he said, "You better get here in the next few minutes." Had to speed down the highway. But seriously, I'm overwhelmed with this. This is not necessary. I'm one of you. We all are on this team. And it's a dream that will come true. And since Jonathan was so polite to give me two minutes, I only have a minute left or so. I just wanted to thank all of you for being a part of this wonderful project. And it's coming true. And I have to make a quick commercial. I came from Davidson County last week and they're planning a wonderful reception on September the 30th. That's on a Thursday evening from five to seven. The bridge, by the way, is completed. It's renovated. It's open. They're gonna have a, they call it an ice cream social and have tours of the facility on Davidson. We'll go out on the bridge. Everybody is invited. It's, this is a fun time. It's a sort of a celebration. And so if you're not doing anything on Thursday evening, five to seven, show up at the Wilcox Bridge and I'll buy you an ice cream cone. We'll celebrate the Yadkin River Park. And thanks to Jonathan, each of you, especially Joe, our dream is coming true. And we see more and more everyday progress being made. So I'm so proud to be a part of that. I love Spencer. You know, my mom and grandfather all grew up here, so I feel like it's my hometown also. God bless each one of you and we are all a part of the dream team. We're all gonna make it happen. God bless.
All right, are there any other recognitions at this time? All right, hearing none, we will now move to our public comment section of the agenda. And so anyone wishing to speak for public comment, we'd ask that you please sign in. And then you will have three minutes for public comment. I will, during that time, I will, thank you very much, hold up a one-minute warning card if you start getting to the end of that. And then I will hold up a red card to indicate that those three minutes are up. We have two individuals signed up for public comment in person tonight. Ms. Craven, have we had any email or phone correspondence for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none, the first is Ms. Crystal McRae representing North Rowan High School.
Right here, right here with the mic.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So my name is Crystal McRae and I am the parent, family, and community liaison for North Rowan High School. I just want to take the opportunity to introduce myself and explain what my role is at the high school since it is a brand-new role. Let me just give you a little background about myself. I'm the daughter of the late Carl Marlin Jr. and Mary Marlin. And if I could just take a point of reference, I just want to say thank you to Mayor Williams and to you all for the beautiful proclamation and plaque that you gave to my family in memory of my dad. Thank you for that. I am a graduate of North Rowan High School. My son is a graduate of North Rowan High School and my daughter is currently a junior there. I also am a graduate of North Carolina NT State University and the University of North Carolina at Greensboro. And some of my other roles within the school, I am the PTA president. I am the Bay of Boosters president. And I'm also the vice president of the Athletic Booster. So I was busy before I got there. But as the liaison, my primary responsibility is to help families to advocate for the success of their students. And I could do that, you know, different ways, hosting trainings and workshops and conferences. But that's not why I'm here to speak to you all. I'm actually here to ask you to want to continue to invest in North Rowan High School with your time, your talents, and more. I'm hoping that you will partner with us by providing opportunities for us to work together at different community events where our students and our staff can participate. I also hope that you will be willing to volunteer your time in our school and at our various school events. I want to open the door for community groups and churches who may not already be a part of North Rowan High School. And I want those that are already a part to become even more active at our school. And by doing that, I'm willing to, you know, coordinate any type of events and activities with you all and with the Spencer community because we all know that we are definitely stronger together than we are apart. So that's really why I wanted to come and speak to the board. And I look forward to working with you all and to making our community a better place. And anytime you need to contact me, feel free to call me at the school. Contact me on social media. You can call me however you need to reach out to me. I'm more than open and available to you all. Thank you for this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next on our list, we have Mr. David Dobie, who is here with us tonight.
Well, I don't know if y'all know me or not. I do it modest. I don't really care either way. I got some stuff going on up at four eleven and I think it's, you know, what it is is what it is. I'm working on it. I don't know if y'all ever got bit by a bedbug before. But I hope you never get bit by that stuff. Works on your back. Try to do stuff over the summertime up there and I have been hot. Trying to do what I can do. And I'm only me and I can't do so much. I lost my wife a couple of years ago. I got some relationship problems and you might not think I didn't got nothing to do with stuff, but believe me, it does. So I appreciate it. If y'all could give me some more time, I'm working on it right now. I gotta holler up and load and stuff up on it right now to clean it up. I can only do so much and my mercy that y'all sold. Anything you can help me, I would appreciate. And this is the first time I've ever been to one of these meets. So y'all can do the John Boy and Billy thing and ring a bell. So I've been living here all my life. Fifty-nine years. And I like to say a prayer for David Smith. He used to be ex-alderman. He has COVID and he ain't doing too good. I don't know if any of y'all know that or not. Maybe you do, but if you don't, you do now.
Mr. Dobie, thank you very much.
Who said that?
I did.
I can't recognize, I thank you. I can't recognize nobody. I know Patty real good. She's been my teacher. Don't tell nobody. She always told me, "Don't worry about the bridge until you get to it." I can't burn down no bridges because they're all concrete. Can't burn that down. They don't, you can't burn concrete down.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for speaking to us.
Yeah, no problem. The coding force y'all got, let me tell you something. This guy's a super nice guy. He's really motivated me. I can put Troy Powell all the way down to every high management as well. Some of this is why it is. Troy Powell told me one time, "If you're trimming them old bushes up in the front and I wipe them down, I'll forget about your backyard." So some of it, you know, lies on some of the people that used to work up here. Now, I ain't gonna say it's my fault. I'll take some of the blame too, but it ain't all my fault. You know, I'm human. If you let me get by with something, hey, I'll get by. It's what you, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just asking for some more time if you could help me do that, I can say.
Thank you, sir.
If y'all can work on relationship problem, I'll let you help me with that too. That's a little different, but hey, you know. I, I think finding a soulmate in people's lives. I was married twenty-six years with Tricia, thirty-three, and she worked the food line twenty-five years up here. She run for alderman and I run for mayor one time. I didn't really run to get in. I just wanted to run one time because it's a great town and I love it. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, babe.
All right, we will move on now to item seven, which is our consent agenda. And so these are items that have been selected for consent agenda at our pre-agenda meeting. And so you'll see there the list of items that are on that. Are there any items that need to be pulled from consent agenda for further discussion this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Motion by Mayor Protem.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bish. All in favor? All right, all opposed. That's approved unanimously. And now we will move to item eight, which is considering adopting Resolution 21 dash zero one nine for grant opportunities for the Yadkin River Trailhead. And with that, we will invite Mr. Morris forward.
Thank you, Mayor. In your council agenda packet, there is a resolution for your consideration. We are currently in pursuit of a couple of grants to help with the funding of this project. I was, before the meeting, I placed at each of your places there a rendering of the concept plan. And then on the backside is some, a spreadsheet of the estimated budget. And so I'll have to sort of explain this. This is a spreadsheet that I use in terms of when I'm applying for grants and keeping up with the project. And so it's not really something that's set up for a, in a format that would necessarily make sense to anybody other than me. But we have a construction estimate that was derived for the project by Jeff Ashbaugh, who is our designer with Benish. And so I have in the columns to the left, I have it in phases, phases one, two, and three. And then some design administration costs and some contingency with a total construction budget of $558,000, $558,000.50. And that's if you do it, sort of break it into three phases based on how we might proceed. And then in the center, there's non-phased. And I've got an asterisk on this. It's the same project cost, but it doesn't reflect how there might be some potential efficiencies in terms of some savings potentially in the administration of the construction and the mobilization fees that contractors might need to figure to get on site. So I imagine that number would, would actually be lower if we're able to proceed with a non-phased, in other words, do it all at one time kind of approach. And then in the columns, sort of to the right there, I've got the total budget and potential funding sources and indicating that we have $384,817,000 on hand. I think we actually may have a little more than that right now. I'm pursuing a Carolina Thread Trail grant, which would be in this resolution tonight, $50,000. Recreation Trail Program Grant, RTP Grant, which is $100,000. And this board has already approved a resolution for that particular grant. And then the SRCF is Salisbury Rowan Community Foundation Grant. And we have done some sort of preliminary notifications to the board. We, we got, we were made aware of that grant opportunity between meetings. And so we needed to plow ahead. And so we just tried to let you know that we were proceeding with that. And so if we bat a thousand over the next few weeks in terms of these grants, we could potentially have a funding gap of about $13,000. But then again, the great unknown, when we put this out to a bid process, it may come in lower, may come in higher. But hopefully these estimates are conservative in the sense that they have allotted sufficient cost estimating for their construction. But if we save some money on the design and administration, we save some money on mobilization, we may not have a gap at all. So it's, there's a little bit of a roll of the dice here. And hopefully we'll be able to, we will know within the next few weeks based on the application of these grants, if I'm allowed to go forward with submitting them, we would have sufficient funds to begin the project. And the likely timeline is that we would complete all the construction documents over the course of the winter, that we would submit a request for bids in very early January perhaps, and then have a groundbreaking in February, March. So that's the path I'm pursuing at this point for this trailhead. I will note that I did receive the call from the Carolina Thread Trail this afternoon. They're coming to see the project tomorrow afternoon. So they're, they're very excited about it. And hopefully they'll, they'll be so excited that they'll give us $50,000. So that's what we'll find out.
And maybe sixty-three.
Maybe, maybe. Actually, the maximum was fifty, but I thought, you know what, that. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about this. And I know I've said it many times, that we pursued this with the idea of not having to dip into, you know, the public funds necessarily to make this project happen. And so far, we're there. And I can't really imagine why we won't be able to bring this project home at a very, very low cost to the taxpaying citizens of its town. That's our goal.
When will we see some activity on our side?
So that, what kind of pushed us out, and Ronnie's, he's usually even closer behind me. He's usually right about here. That, we began pursuing the phased, you know, we've got $385,000, right? And so we could have done the initial phase and built a gravel trail. And we could, we could start. But because the two grant opportunities came up for the recreational trail program and the Carolina Thread Trail, it's like if we just tap the brakes just a little bit. These grants are due, both of them, the applications are due on September 24th. And so if we can just hold on for a little bit of time, we may have enough money to proceed right away in the early spring. So to directly answer your question, again, if we bat a thousand on these grant opportunities, and if we don't bat a thousand, I will, I will say that we will, we will start in the spring of 2022. We'll have a groundbreaking if it's a phased project or it's the whole enchilada. I don't know the scope at this point, but there's no reason we can't start building this trail after the first of the year.
Yeah, so I think for the board's purposes, you know, planning that this project will be, will start and should end in 2022.
It's about a six-months project is the timeline for building.
The big thing will be on the tail end is with all the plantings and everything, making sure we have a good window that we're not planting them in the middle of the summer, so.
I'm not getting any younger and I want to make sure that I have plenty of time to walk all over that place.
Well, and I'll, as just additional information to the board, the thing that is interesting to the folks at the Carolina Thread Trail is that they are looking to do a rebranding of their Red Trail logo and their communication plan. And this is a major gateway slash intersection connection linkage that they really see the value of this. And so they are coming to sort of explore that with us tomorrow. And they'll, they'll be on site two o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Very good.
So we, we do have a resolution for your consideration if you would be willing to proceed with that.
Very good. And this resolution is 21 dash zero one nine. And it is basically to allow Mr. Morris's staff to pursue the Carolina Thread Trail Grant and the Salisbury Rowan Community Foundation Grant Program. And so I will not read the entire resolution at this time unless the board wants me to. And so if there's no further discussion, is there a motion to approve this?
A move that we approve this.
A motion by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Sledge. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed. All right, that is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joe, get to work. Seriously, thanks to you, Mr. Morris, and all the staff and Mr. Smith for all of your involvement. We really appreciate it.
God bless him.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is our departmental reports. And so with that, we will invite Mr. Osborne forward with our, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris forward with our planning department report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll probably keep this report relatively brief. It's been a fairly routine month in terms of permitting. Once again, we've had, we've seen a continuation of our updates in new single-family homes. In August, I approved four new single-family homes. We had a proposal for an additional three in the historic district, but the historic preservation commission is continuing to work with the owner of that property on determining a, a design for that site that's appropriate. I do want to bring y'all's attention to a couple of particular permits that I issued. These will not be reflected in your report because I updated, these were reviewed once this report was already submitted to y'all. But the Packaging Corporation of America at 1302 North Salisbury Avenue are doing a parking lot expansion as well as re-landscaping and some additional site work at their, at their property. If you see any work going on in the next couple of months, just know that it was properly reviewed and approved. They're installing about fifty new parking spots in the front of their building as well as an expansion of their cargo trailer parking lot in the rear. And that was a sort of an ongoing process because they're disturbing a significant area of that site. They will need a land disturbance permit from Rowan County. I also work with them on making sure that the expanded parking area is appropriately lighted. That's in an area of town where we do want to make sure that, in terms of protection of property and employees on the site, that any parking on that site is appropriately lit. See. I also wanted to point out, staff are working on an ongoing basis with the owner and tenant of 200 South Salisbury Avenue. Y'all may be familiar with that property. At one point, it was an exterminator site. It's currently being used for an auto repair business. Now, the zoning for that particular site does not support any auto repair uses. But as long as the owner continues to work with us in good faith, we will not penalize them for that. But we will need to get that before the planning board because in order for that use to be a compliant use moving forward, they will need to secure rezoning to our new vehicle service and repair district. So we're working with them on an ongoing basis. If you notice, you, y'all may have noticed, there are a number of cars parked on the exterior of that building on the lot. We will work with them to ensure that our standards for the parking of vehicles are being met for that particular use.
So Kyle, you say we're working with them.
Yes.
What does that mean? What, what are we doing right now to make sure that they work to come into compliance?
So we've established a deadline of October 27th for them to submit a rezoning permit application to the town. Now, the reason that that deadline is a little bit further off than maybe we would typically have is that we haven't done a rezoning in quite some time. And so in order to make sure that as the town, we're providing all proper guidance and we're doing everything that we need to do to effectuate the rezoning, we just don't want to rush that process. So that's why the deadline is a little bit further along than maybe we would typically see. Typically, we would do either a thirty-to-sixty day deadline. But we just want to make sure we're not rushing that process, given that we just haven't done a rezoning in quite some time. not rushing that process, given that we just haven't done a rezoning in quite some time.
And so you're working with the property owner?
Yes, I'm working with the property owner as well as the tenant.
And the property owner is interested in the rezoning process?
Yeah, the property owner initiated the rezoning. I will also direct your attention to the, the Interspec development. You may notice the new building going up on the interstate. That building will include a large internally illuminated sign visible from the interstate. And so, you know, we properly reviewed that, and our current sign standards do allow a large internally illuminated sign. So if you see that going up, just know that it was properly reviewed and approved. In terms of our current vacancies on the planning board, we do have two extraterritorial jurisdiction vacancies and one in-town vacancy. We've received three board applications to fill the in-town vacancy. The planning board actually did not meet yesterday. We didn't have any normal agenda items, so we simply canceled that meeting. I anticipate that at the regular meeting in October, we will go ahead and interview at least a selection of those candidates, given that there are so many. We may need to have an additional special meeting in between now and our regular meeting in October, but we'll, we'll just see what's the appropriate path forward on that.
How many did you say?
Three.
You've got two ETJ openings, one in-town, and you have three?
Three for in-town, three in-town members, yes. We still haven't seen any applications from ETJ residents. So I think that's, that's something that we'll simply have to work more closely with the county on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you remind the board, because one of the things that our board can do are those folks we know that are in the ETJ that would be good representatives to make sure we get that word out. But the process for those applications goes through the county, correct?
Yes, sir. The Rowan County website has a dedicated application process, so even if someone is applying to join Spencer's Planning Board, they still need to go through Rowan County, and the Rowan County Board of Commissioners needs to approve that, sort of on our behalf in a way. I guess I'll ask, do you have any questions for me?
Yes. Last, last meeting, we talked about the Rosen Brothers and their building, which is properly going on on Main Street. Has that been finalized?
No, sir. The town attorney may want to provide some additional information on that. There seems to be a problem with the titles on all of the properties that we were nominally going to sell to the Rosen's. And so the Rosen's have an attorney, and they're working with Jay on that issue. It seems like something we, we may be able to resolve. I, I just can't provide any, any perspective on that. There, there was a problem with the titles for both of those. So.
Thank you. I have a question about the building that's just north of Midtown Apartments that's being used for, I guess, a customizing business, the building that's directly across from Compass. Some time ago, I think one of us asked you why there were wrecked vehicles being placed in the back lot. Those vehicles are still back there. There's a wrecked tractor unit and it's like a big camper that's back there. Now there are several folks in there. Are they operating within the parameters of the zoning for that?
I can tell you that in terms of screening, they, they, they did half of what they needed to do. Half of the property is properly screened, but then there is still a section of fencing on Salisbury Avenue that needs to be fenced. The owner indicated that he would do it, but I probably need to go ahead and, and issue a notice of violation to get that fencing, the screening installed. In terms of the vehicles that are actually being stored on that lot, the parcel is zoned for vehicle service and repair, which includes towing and storage of vehicles. If I go ahead and issue a notice of violation for the screening, I can also at that time take a look and see if there are any additional vehicle storage standards that they may not be in compliance with.
Seacrest.
Kyle, I had two questions, and these came from citizens, and I wasn't sure, wasn't sure exactly. One is about the new facade grant. Does that, for businesses, not for individuals, but one for businesses, does that also include civic organizations and/or churches? I didn't know.
That's a good question. The, the way that I have currently developed the map for that property based on the guidelines that were adopted is that only commercial properties would be eligible. However, I, I believe it may be the discretion of this board to determine if that would include civic properties that are still within the overall area of eligibility, which would be Salisbury Avenue and in the downtown area. I think it, as long as it's providing a benefit to the appearance of our downtown and Salisbury Avenue, it would make sense to include those as being eligible. We would probably, if I were to receive an application for a property that I wasn't sure that was eligible, I would probably still bring it to the board and ask y'all to make a determination on that with some sort of recommendation. I think it would just go back to common sense of whether or not it benefited the appearance of downtown.
Okay, and I had one more.
So hold on, let's cover, let's cover that issue real quickly. So would it be the pleasure of the board to ask Mr. Harris to provide some amendment language at our next meeting that would amend our current, recently approved guidelines that would add civic organizations or civic buildings to that facade grant? Okay, I think there's general consensus. If you could provide us that next meeting, please.
I can do that.
All right, Seacrest.
And the other thing, and I wasn't certain how to answer this either, electronic signs, similar to what the schools have. Now, the ones that, I noticed the one at North Grand Middle School today, it looks really nice. Are they allowed on Salisbury Avenue?
I'll have to do more research.
I've never seen one.
They have not been. So during my time on the planning board, that was one of the things that we were in the process was revising the sign ordinance. Of course, all that was kind of held up pending the 160D changes. So I'm not sure maybe what the status of our updated sign ordinance is, but that was something that they were discussing, because that's something that we, you know, I know that will become a point of discussion with our new property.
Yeah, we talked about, you know.
Do we have a community information board and that sort of thing?
Well, I'm just gonna tell the people that have asked me to hold off on that, and that's still in.
Well, Kyle, can you give us an update?
What I will say is, my understanding is that previously before our old codes were repealed and replaced, that the Salisbury Avenue Commercial Corridor Overlay District may have had additional standards for signage on Salisbury Avenue. But the way the new ordinance treats signs is that it's blanket across the city. There's no special signage regulations that apply only to Salisbury Avenue. And my understanding is that we do allow electronic signs that, that have to meet additional standards for lighting. It can't be too bright. It can't involve moving text or any sort of distracting text. But I can get back with this group with, with a better answer.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Sledge.
I'm sorry, and I will just say one thing. I think you reached out to James, or someone reached out to James, our code enforcement officer, about electronic signs. And that is in my inbox, so I will, I will respond to that directly, which should provide you an answer.
Thank you very much. I didn't know it till late this afternoon, so.
Okay.
Is there any progress for the community garden?
The Community Appearance Commission, at their previous meeting, Sky Allen actually invited a North Carolina Agricultural Cooperative Extension expert, and he provided a lot of really helpful information to us on what we can still accomplish this late in the planting season. But Amy Ray and I and Sky are working on agreeing a memorandum of, of understanding. Now, that has not yet been finalized. We, I, I don't know if, if all the women, Seacrest, wants to chime in on that, but it seems like we just haven't had an opportunity to meet with the session yet.
It came up the last night at our session meeting, and we're well aware of it, so we're ready whenever y'all want.
Yeah, and we are as well. We can be available essentially at any time, because we really do need to get that MOU finalized. We have a draft MOU, and the language is there. We just want to make sure that the language is agreeable to the church.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? All right, and just a point of order, we do not have the report for Kyle for this month in our packet, so.
That, and, and that was passed out at the pre-agenda, which you were not physically, there may be ones still up there that was intended for you, but we'll get, we'll make sure you get that.
Everybody else have it?
And I need one.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is, here it is. I've got one.
Very good.
This month's report was essentially just a, a catalog of the approved permits.
Very good. Okay.
We'll make sure.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, anything else for Mr. Harris?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Mr. Osborne with our code enforcement report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow board members.
Good evening.
Before I'd like to start, I'd like to thank Mr. David Debbie for taking the time to speak to you all today about the situation out there at 411, and for the kind of words he spoke about me. Appreciate him taking the time to speak so kindly of me, so. Give you highlights for my monthly report. I had 48 cases, 36 open, 12 abated throughout the month, seven were enforced with a notice of violations. I have a total of 353 cases for the year at the end of August, and 22 notice of violations that were submitted or sent out during the, the month. I conducted two minimal housing inspections to addresses 202 South Rowan and 109 Sixth Street, and a housing hearing for the house on the Long Street that was hit by a tree, it fell on it, it's pretty much needs to be demolished, and spoke with owners about that one. They're waiting on the insurance payout, so they can demolish it and rebuild. In addition, the code enforcement citizen portal is under revisement. The town manager and I have, and some of the staff members have spoke about the changes that need to be taken. And so I'll push those forward to I-Works, and I'm still waiting on a revised version of it, so I can review it and see if the changes are adequate before we post it up on the new website. And hopefully that will be adequate here very soon, and we can have that up for the citizens to make complaints through our new website. I know that some folks are utilizing our new website. I've received some complaints, at least one, through our contact us on our webpage. So I'd like to kind of streamline that a little bit better than the way we received that particular one. The other pages, you can see the addresses that I've been dealing with and the types of violations for, for the month of August. Some of those have changed obviously since this was done, but it's reduced to, I think, probably about six cases, six, seven cases on there of course for the month of August. 2020 cases and 2019 cases are slowly chipping away. Most of those are minimal housing cases, and then that's just dealing with homeowners and money and a lot of construction-type work that needs to be done. Short of that, any, any questions from the board?
I've got one. And when Chief comes in, I'm gonna ask him as well. It's been quite a stew. I'm still hearing reference to the remedial plan with the landlord, and if there's any, has been question whether it's being used. I know your report can't reflect that, but then to a certain point it can without divulging any information. Just want to know whether do you or Chief, where are we with that? Is that being something that's?
It is being addressed. I actually had a meeting with the RAP program administrator at the Salisbury Police Department last week, and she gave me a lot of information about the, the way they operate the RAP program, some differences. They've obviously got more infrastructure to be able to manage that. So we're trying to find a way to integrate the code information along with the PD information. I've been working with our PD administrator, Susan Moore, who's the chief's administrative assistant there. We're working together to try and, a way to marry that together, so that way we can bring the information into one place and sort that out, so we can actually bring the code and PD together and use it in a manner that it was meant to.
There is still the, the slum lords that are, that it seems to the community that I keep hearing from, that are still doing what they do. And as far as reports coming back, whether it's coming forward at this meeting to say that you guys are doing anything is where I'm at. Because even for me, I don't hear anything myself, reference to what you guys are doing. I can't answer them, and if you can't answer me at a meeting where everybody else can hear it, then something needs to be handled on that end to, to, like what you said, if y'all can just go ahead and start working something out and communicate it out to the public and us as much that there is something happening here. Because right now, it doesn't look it for us that live around and for all the people that live here, you know, slum lords are still doing what they do.
I, I totally understand, and a lot of that's information-driven. And so by collecting information through I-Works and marrying that with the PD, we can hold these landlords more accountable once we get that information where they can merge. And that's where I'm trying to get it. And so with I-Work system, has some ability that can provide that to us, as we're just trying to work out the details on how to make sure we can marry that and then bring that stuff forward, so we can start holding more landlords accountable, accountable. Because I'm generating more and more information through the I-Works, which is what I need. I need more data so we can hold, at least kind of go back and see where things are at. Because if I'm only six months back, the way I was working before with spreadsheets is very cumbersome. So I have the ability now to start working that system a little bit better. And along with the information I received from Ms. Ziegler up there, that's going to be beneficial. So I, I understand it seems like it's dragging and not really making much movement. We're trying to get it off the ground, it's trying to get some traction here. So we're working it.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess one of the things I would, two, one question is, do you have a timeframe on when, you know, we'll start to see some of that?
I have not developed any timeframes for that. It's, it's one of those things, when I have time to try and push it forward, except I'm not working cases, I have to be in here working this, trying to get the, the stuff here and all.
Peter, is that something between Mr. Osborne and the chief that you can work towards figuring out what a timeline for? Because we've got the, we've got the ordinance in place. We need to be making sure we, we use that tool effectively. And it sounds like right now, part of it's a limitation in technology and a limitation in staff time to be able to get it done.
Certainly.
Okay, the other thing too is, as we do that, it's just to keep in mind ways that you can communicate that, whether it's to the board, obviously, that, that we can incorporate that reporting and with the other reporting that you're doing, but then also that our public can see that there is action being taken on it. Okay?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Osborne? All right, thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next is our police department report. Invite Chief James in.
Mayor, members of board, good evening.
Good evening.
Pleased to report to you that Mr. Philip Brown has obtained his certificate of completion of basic law enforcement training. He passed his state exam. He is burning some cop time. Friday, he will go to the firing range. And after that, the paperwork will travel to Raleigh. And hopefully soon we'll be able to get him sworn in. Disappointing that we couldn't all go to his graduation. I talked to him early that morning and they were all set to go. And I guess someone of the officials at Mitchell Community College decided maybe that wasn't the best thing to do, so they canceled. But I have met with him, talked with him, offered all of our congratulations to him. And I did talk to the director of the BLET program and his words were that you are getting a person of great character. He did tell me, as I have indicated to you before, his words were the sharks are circling. People are trying to recruit him. But he said, I think he will be loyal and will come to Spencer as he said he would do and fulfill his obligation to us. So that is outstanding news. I have presented you the activity log event summary. There were thirteen hundred and twenty-two events. Be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding that. I can share with you regarding our crime data that the trend for assaulted behavior continues. We actually recently had an assault at the Family Dollar and it was over three cents, believe it or not. The gentleman didn't have quite enough. He was asked for the cashier and he punched her in the face. So that's the world that we're currently living in. I'm not sure if it's COVID related or what it is, but very disappointing behavior that we're seeing. Our crime rate is up about twenty point six percent. And a big part of the force driving that is assaulted behavior. We continue to have, recently had another vehicle that was gone through. They stole a Nintendo game out of it. And as part of our newsletter, newsletter, I've asked Ms. Craven to put in the next newsletter. Please lock your car doors. Our folks live very close to each other. It's a crime of opportunity. We believe we know who's doing it. We've caught them doing some of these events and we're working with the juvenile justice system to try to get him removed from our community. So hopefully we'll see some results with that, that very soon. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about police. Yes, sir.
The instance you're talking about, is that the ones dealing with the problems with overall hopewood and Charles Street? Because I understand some of my neighbors have been, cars have been broken in at night.
I think that was some of them. And on one occasion, we believe he took a weapon. We actually have recovered that weapon that was thrown in the bushes behind the old hatchery on Second Street. So we do believe that to be the case. Yes, sir. He has admitted to some things that he did, some he has not. But it's our belief that he's been involved in a lot of criminal activity. So hopefully very soon we will be able to get him to a place and hopefully can offer him the help he needs to try to change his back. Yes.
One other question. We were alerted about a shooting on Yankin Avenue. Is that still, you know what I'm talking about, five hundred block of Yankin Avenue?
The drive-by shooting.
Yeah. Any words on that, please?
No, I know that they did make an arrest. Salisbury PD made an arrest. That was in the paper for the homicide that occurred in Salisbury. We believe that those probably were related, but that is still under investigation and no arrests have been made on that as of yet.
Do you all have a policy of being around parking and parking areas and, and just kind of keeping an eye on things for businesses? The reason I'm asking that question is Saturday, two weeks ago, or Saturday a week ago, I guess it is now. I had Charlie with me and I needed to run into the grocery store. Obviously, I'm not going to leave him in a hot car.
Right.
And I certainly wouldn't leave the car running in a food line parking lot. So I parked the car under a tree that's up close, right across from those apartments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's still in the, in the food line parking lot. And as I was sitting there getting him situated and telling him I'd be right back, I saw a drug deal occur right there in that parking lot between two vehicles. And I mean, it's broad daylight, middle of the afternoon. And that kind of thing concerns me. Do we have people who are policing those areas or how, how does it work? I mean, that's years ago, I'm sure I saw a drug deal at that ATM there.
Right.
But this one was, yeah.
We do have. And keep in mind that occasionally I've got one officer working alone. If you look at the activity log, you can see the business checks listed. So we do a lot of those. But I thank you for pointing out the fact that you saw one in that parking lot because I've not heard that from anyone else. But that's a good gauge for me. And then what I do in turn, I will let our guys know that what you observed and we will do our best to increase patrols in that area and hopefully deter that behavior from taking place. Because I for one and all of my guys, we do not want that in our town. Unfortunately, it's going on a lot of places. But a police car being present there and an officer certainly does deter them. So thank you for bringing that to my attention. Appreciate it.
Chief, you said you only have one officer working during the days. Your sergeants, when they come in at what time, noon?
Normally they come in at about two. Today, for instance, it was Officer Bain and myself, and of course the SROs are tied to the school. So there are times that we're pretty thin and, and today I was actually the guy taking calls as Officer Bain had to leave to take care of an emergency for his wife who had a broken tooth. But you know, that's not the norm. But there are times that we have one person working. So once we get this position that you folks were gracious enough to give us, get that individual hired and trained and get Mr. Brown through the FTO program. And soon we'll have Officer Smith through the FTO program. He's getting near the end, then things will get better.
I ask you if you can have your sergeants for me, since I see it, if they can patrol a little bit more when they come on. Because I've noticed the checkoff. One or two of them will check off and stay in office. And then a couple hours later, they'll check back in service. If they can help, since we're so short, like what you're saying. And just, you know, do, do their due diligence of, you know, assisting because that was the whole point of creating the sergeant position was to be able to have this availability for that one officer even more at night. If you, I, I ask if you can do that because I've noticed that as far as the, the communication screen. And I may be wrong, but that's what I see in, in according to what you just got me saying is, is, is validated at that, that one officer's when he needs a second vehicle that's here in the office, need to be out there on the street.
Absolutely. And, and I know today, for instance, Sergeant Cruz was in Glock armor school. So there are occasions where they are out of pocket, but when they are working, we will do a better job. In fact, very soon, I've talked to one of the sergeants today. I'm going to have a meeting with supervisors. And that's actually one of the things I plan to discuss is that was actually brought to my attention this morning by one of my officers. So yes, we will we will improve in that category, I promise.
I firmly believe the more officers we can have visible out on the streets, you know, it's going to deter some of the things that Ms. Sledge was mentioning and you know, and for our other residents that are law-abiding citizens, it provides them an additional comfort level in the public safety that we're providing in the town. So, thank you, Chief.
There's two other things I need to ask. The committee, the lady that came in here and presented, how is that going? Your committee, the citizens?
Oh, yes. Actually, we haven't had another meeting. We're going to be meeting soon, but thank you for bringing it up because that jogged my memory on something else that I shared with Mr. Franzese today. Dr. Stevens at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill is doing a publication and he has sent out the table of contents. So Spencer and Salisbury and Benson and Morrisville and other larger cities will be part of that publication on what we're trying to accomplish with our advisory boards. And Dr. Stevens is actually going to call me at ten thirty in the morning and we're going to discuss it further. We've also recently, after working with Roanoke Barris Community College, finally got approval to get the fee waived where all those members can go to the firearm simulator training in Cabarrus County. That's part of Roanoke Barris Community College and use the firearm simulator. And I think that will pay great dividends in allowing these civilians to see what an officer may experience as he's on a call where there might be firearms weapons involved, where they've got to make arrests and make a quick decision on whether to use force. So I think that will pay great dividends to, in the future.
The last one was when I was talking to Osborne just now, I don't know if you could hear back there, reference to a lot of complaints and the mayor had made mention of some things too on the remedial plan for the slum lords. It's picked up. Obviously with your call volume, there's going to be those things. And we're just kind of needing the, even for the previous board to, to make sure that it has some teeth, as I heard in an email is used because you have that to use if y'all can start with Osborne saying there's communication and need to bring it together kind of thing. And I actually, it'll, it'll will start with you reference to the calls that are received. If your guys are going out there multiple times, more than two times, it's two times too many. But for the obvious, off of that remedial plan. Because there's some, like I said, previous board members and citizens have been just upset thinking that thing's not being used.
And, and we are using it. We send the report every month, but if they don't meet that threshold, then there's nothing we can do. And I think I mentioned before, the one that did meet the threshold that had to pay the hundred and seventy-five dollar fine. I can tell you that thus far it's actually worked. So I think you're right. And I loved your icon of the tooth there in an email. So yes, we do have teeth. We're working to do a better job assimilating the code part of it with the criminal part. And Mr. Osborne and I have discussed that at length. And he's also met with Ms. Moore. So we're going to make sure that that piece of the puzzle is also included for minimum housing and other things that he might discover during the scope of his employment. So good point. Then thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. All right. Mr. Bish?
As I go through your, your listing of the items that you are dealing with on a monthly basis, I keep looking for the number of arrests that you, that may occur during the month. Do you show that anywhere?
I do have a way that I could pull off arrest. I can tell you that now for rest of the because of COVID in the jail, they're likely down because we were actually told to not serve as many warrants just because, and I got a report today at the chief's meeting that COVID is way down in the jail. I think they're saying there were seven cases at one point. I think we had forty-some maybe. So that has greatly improved. So and there are times, and the sheriff said, if you have serious things that you need to physically arrest someone for, then please do it. We'll accommodate them in the jail. But I know for a while, you know, they also were trying to do a release on personal recognizance. So people were not placed into an environment where there was a lot of COVID. But thank goodness that, that has changed.
So that would also include the categories of like the number of summons or tickets that were written and so forth?
Yes, I can, I can obtain that data. I can tell you how many citations written per month, how many physical arrests that are made as well. Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Very well.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right. Next is our fire department report and Chief Landis with us.
Mayor, board, good afternoon. I was sitting back here and I've made some additional notes to this. Obviously there, that first one is with influx of COVID calls. I would probably say seven out of ten that we're running are currently screened by communications center is COVID positive. So just to try to restrict unnecessary interaction with individuals with COVID, we are staged, we're back to staging a block away. That way we're readily available. Would EMS get there? Cardiac arrest? Anything life threatening happen? We could be able to be there to assist and intervene in that. Since I did the report, we are having an issue with the tires on ladder seventy-five. The staff every morning as part of their truck checks, they check the tire pressures. I would say last Wednesday, we noticed there's, let's just say there's supposed to be one twenty. They were, the pressures were down to fifty on two of the back tires. Took them down, the town mechanic, you know, put more air in the tires. Next day it was right back down. So obviously we have a slow leak somewhere. And I'm in the process of working with Chad to kind of figure out, is it something we can repair? Or is it going to take a replacement of two, three tires, whatever that may look like.
Can you tell me where those, where you're picking up the nails? Because I'm having the same problem.
Really?
So it's somewhere in town.
Absolutely. Well, and I noticed today, I, I got underneath the truck and was examining there on the back, you know, there's two tires. On the inside or the outside of one, there's a gash. So whether somebody ran over something, they got too close to the curb, whatever that may be. Obviously that is one tire that will have to be replaced just to follow suit with DOT recommendations for that. I've listed some pub, pub ed events on there. Just kind of wanted to elaborate on those. Coffee with the fire chief. I've seen this in other communities be successful. It just allows the community to come in and kind of be a soundboard for the, the citizens here in town. You know, any issues or questions they may have. The goal for that is to be on a monthly basis, quarterly at the absolute worst. I know I've spoken with Mr. Franzese on doing a, like a bi-annually CPR class. Again, it's just going to help us, it's going to help the community and more people we can get trained for CPR. And then the hope of a fire prevention week open house, that would be like a Saturday thing. Obviously with COVID, I'm unsure if that's going to come to this year. I would love for it to. But just with the safety of all the citizens in mind, I'm not sure if we'll proceed with that. Did, I've got twenty-four staff. I'd had five interviews last week of those five. Only one were actually qualified and met the minimum requirements for part-time. So we offered, I think Stacy had sent out a conditional offer for one individual. And we also added one as for our junior firefighter program. He's only seventeen. And then the last thing I just want to hit on was just for CDC recommendations. Again, you know, oftentimes the community kind of will wander into the fire station. That's great. I'll kind of want that welcoming public place. But what we did last year and we kind of just reintroduced the same thing is practically if you're not fire department personnel, try to stay out of the firehouse. Yeah, I don't know where person A, B, or C has been, if they've been exposed, if they have COVID. The last thing I want to, I'm sure y'all seen Landis Fire Department had shut down for two weeks here recently. The last thing I want to Uh, the last thing I want is some individual to come in and, and wipe out the fire station and do more harm than good. Um, I will be placing signage on the doors with our phone number. Would there be a medical emergency, they could still, would be able to contact us and we could get that care for them. Y'all have any questions for me?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So the coffee with the chief is like the best idea I've ever heard in a long time. And I can't tell you, I just saw it on the news for the, the brand new Elon, chief of police, she's doing something of the same, and you just said exactly. What that's for. That's for the community. If they felt like they need to bring something to you. Without having to go through the board, without, without having to be told. So, that, good for you. I mean, that's, I, I like it.
And when, Chief, when do you plan on starting that?
I'll be honest, the plan was to start it this month. Um, trying to clean the desk off a little bit and, uh. I hope to begin that in October. Um, don't hold me to it. I hate for something to come up and then it not be held. Uh, and you know, there'll be minimal calls approved. Brewing coffee is pretty cheap.
I was gonna ask you, what type of coffee?
Are you gonna, are you gonna have good, manly, uh, coffee or some of that wussy, girly stuff that, uh?
I drink mine black with no sugar, no creamer. So, I, I, I drink cowboy coffee.
Real mud, real mud.
Um, I know Coco Job in the past has been very, um, gracious in their donations. Um, we've had some staff go there before and they'll hand us three, four bags of coffee. So I'm gonna reach out to, um, local vendors such as them and see if they would like to make any donations.
Count me in.
Absolutely.
Uh, one thing, uh, the note under personnel remains severely understaffed, even with recent additions to personnel. Um, you have twenty-four personnel, what's the, what's the ideal number?
So currently I have twelve with the addition would make thirteen part-timers. I am still looking at thirty-five to forty vacancies and shifts on a monthly basis. Um, obviously, if we go back to part-time staff, it's cheap. But the availability comes in, there may be seven or eight people for one day, and I give three people those spots. The next day, there may be no one that's available. Um, I know here in the last couple of weeks, there's been four or five days, it's, it's been me, just me, and it's unfortunate. Um, obviously NFPA, OSHA standards, everything, we're not meeting any of those just due to the staffing, but. Um, ideally at a minimum, ten more part-timers. And, and, and that would hopefully make it better. Uh.
Well, Chief, do understand is this board right here is actually gonna work, has been working, we even worked over this past Thursday to make sure to look out. And I forgot to tell the chief of police that's reference to you guys contracting COVID and, and making sure that y'all don't have to pay for coming in. Getting sick and then have to pay for it. So the manager has worked with the, the town attorney, and I think they've come up with something pretty good to, to look out, to have y'all's back out there. I forgot to tell. The chief that too, so just know that.
We graciously appreciate it.
So Chief Lanning, as far as the ten part-timers, have you had an opportunity to talk to other chiefs in other areas about? Recruitment strategies that, that they might be using that we haven't used yet?
So, you know, uh, we're relying very heavily on social media.
Yeah.
Uh, both our, the towns, um, and obviously our personnel shares about every post in terms of hiring, um, that, that we post. The problem is, is I, I think it's society as a whole is finding people to work. Um, in, here in the, in the county, we're fighting at the end of the day for a dollar. You know, there's departments on the other side of the county that are now paying fifteen dollars an hour. Um, so, you know, it, a part-time job, it's spending money to most of these people. It's not their livelihood. It's not what pays their bills. Um, they come in to have some play money, and if they can make a dollar more here, they're, we're, you know, we're, we're just competing against each other. Um, you know, in comparison to municipalities, we're the only one that doesn't have full-time staff. Um, I, I do have a coffee at China Groves. Their assistant chief is a part-timer for me. There are budgets are within a thousand dollars of each other, and they have six full-timers. So trying to compare. Um, but in terms of part-time staff, every department's struggling. Um, you know, there's maybe a day where I'm, I'm fully staffed with three during the day, including myself, and E. Spencer will have one. The next day it might be the vice versa. Um, I, I think it's, it's countywide. It's not anything specific to Spencer. Um, I think it's just unfortunately the beast we're having to deal with right now.
Well, you're gonna wind up burning yourself out. Uh. See, see if there's a way to get some more people in, you know.
That's right.
From Peter's experience, uh, maybe there's something. That we're not doing that we could, could do to entice more people to, uh, get into the fire service. I know, you know, years and years ago, we saw about, uh, uh, pride and tradition, you know. Uh, my father, my grandfather, yeah, they, uncles, they were all firefighters. Uh, but you don't have that, uh, a lot anymore. But, uh, I certainly won't, wouldn't want to, uh. For this to drag out for very much longer.
Well, and, and you know, and ultimately, I guess what I'm fearful of, um, not, not to go down a whole nother rabbit hole, is, is that. Our staffing levels are subpar. Would something happen? I, I don't wanna get to a house and there'd be a child in a house and the house is on fire. Right? I, I know personally what I would do, what's recommended or not. I know what I would do, and that's what I could live with. But I guess as a whole, uh, from a community standpoint, that, you know, that their tax dollars go here and here. I, I just, I want us to be able to provide the level of service they deserve. Uh, and I think what we owe to them.
I, I think the unfortunate thing is, you know, the, the whole concept of volunteering, whether it be a fire department or civic organization or anything. Used to be highly regarded.
Yes.
And now that word, unfortunately, in our society kinda carries a negative con- uh, connotation. Nobody, nobody wants to do things for free. Yeah, I almost wonder if, you know, we need to, to reframe how we're messaging our fire department, that it's not a volunteer. Organization, um, you know, that we, we phrase it as a professional organization with full-time and part-time. You know, I, I hate that we even have to have that type of conversation, but I think that's the reality of where we are.
Yes, sir.
Um, and just know that this board, you know, we're, we're gonna work to support you and the staffing that you need.
Yes, sir.
Um, we recognize that more full-time from a budgetary standpoint is a lot more difficult to swing.
It is.
Than the part-timers. But if, if it's part-timers that we need to make the budget work, then we gotta find a way to get them on board and, you know. Let us know, Peter, let us know from a recruiting standpoint, what sorts of things we all can be doing together to bring more folks on board.
Yes, sir.
You are leading a top-notch organization. Um, and you've really turned things around with that department, and I, you know. For me, if you wanna talk about somebody wanting to work part-time in a fire department, Spencer's the place to be to do that.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and I think that's a message that we need to make sure that we're getting out to folks. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Anything else? I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Stay safe.
Thank you.
All right, next is our public works report with Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
Uh, we'll start, uh, update on the bus shelter. Uh, we'll start with that. And I sent a message to, uh, Jericho Poms, which is Tony Hyde is my, my liaison, and, um. He sent back this update that, um, the bench, uh, for the bus shelter has been ready. Um, they're having difficulty getting the leg material for the, for the shelter. So he said they did finally receive that last week. Um, those have been cut and waiting to be drilled and powder coated. Uh, best guess is we should be done in about three weeks, is what he says. So that's the update on the, on the bus shelter. As soon as we receive it, then we'll get it, you know, put up, so.
And Mr. Taylor, remind me again, where's the location of that one gonna go?
Uh, it's at the Fifth Street and Salisbury Avenue.
Okay. Park Plaza.
Yeah, pretty much where the, where that park would be. It's right on the, we're gonna put it right on the corner. There's already handicap ramps available right there. Um, so it just makes sense that we'll put it, slide it in that corner. Uh, once the park comes into play, if we need to move it, it's not a big deal. You know, just take the legs up, we'll move it where we need to fit the park.
Great.
That'll be the next one. Yes, sir. Um, reminder of the, uh, fall, the fall mulch giveaway, we're still planning on having it on the second. Uh, we will do it best to COVID guidelines that we can. They don't have to get out of vehicles. They can just run in, get what they need and leave. Um, if they wanna order it. Or have it delivered, uh, we prefer that they would go through town hall. Um, they can pay for it. And then I'll get the receipt saying that how many loads they want, that kinda stuff. We'll show up, we'll deliver it in the yard. Um, they'll, if they did like last time, they'll just stand on the fortune point. You know what I mean? Then we don't get any face-to-face contact. They'll just say, hey, I want it right there. So that way we'll know exactly where we're dumping it. That's a lot of mulch if it's not in the right spot. So we wanna make sure, that's a lot of movement. So we, we'll make sure it gets where, where they want it, so. Um, Ms. Sabrit did get an update on Thursday at the fridge in the meeting, and she and I talked, uh, we talked earlier today. Um, she's getting the names and the addresses sent over to me of the properties that we need to move on. Um, so as soon as I get those names, should be probably tomorrow. Uh, then we'll make contact with them. I think she said that there was four potential properties that we need to contact. Um, one of them, I think, is probably ours. So there's possibly three that we'll have to contact. Um, and we'll make contact with them. We've already made contact with them over this before. We'll just make contact with them again. You know, and specify a date where we want to get started. And she's trying to get her builders to give me that date, so we know exactly when work's gonna start. Um, then we'll have some information for them, and then we can get together. And we may can do a Zoom call or something, let her present what's gonna happen. Um, and she said she could even go out there and put some lines on the ground. You know, kinda showing them, you know, that way they can run by and look at it before we get a final decision on what's gonna happen, but. It's moving along. We're gonna get that, um, taken care of and get started hopefully into the fall, um, get it done. Um. Uh, as noted in number six, uh, just to give an update, we have been short of two gentlemen, uh, for long, long-term injuries. Um, one of those, I think is gonna get corrected soon without giving too much information. But, uh, and I've also had two out with COVID, uh, for the last several weeks. So, and one of the gentleman has had another setback on his COVID, but, um. So Faith and I are working on getting some temporary help, uh, to fill in these gaps a little bit. So, uh, so we can move on and get some other stuff. Our main goal with being four people down, um, we were eleven, now we're, what, seven? Um, sometime this week, we were at six, um, because, you know, some guys still wanna take a vacation, so it is what it is. Um, but routine services are getting done. Uh, trash service is getting done, mowing's getting done, and brush service is getting done. Uh, some of the other stuff has had to take a back burner for a little bit, you know, projects and that kinda stuff, but, uh, we've been concentrating mainly on routine services. Specifically garbage service, that's got to run. So, and we did get our truck back, so the, the truck is back and in, in operation.
Were you on the ride around this week on Monday?
Ma'am?
Were you on the back of the truck on Monday?
Yes, ma'am. I was on the truck on Monday and I was on the truck again today. So, um.
Thank you.
Trying to free up other people to be able to get these other services done, the brush and that. And then Chad, of course, has got to work, cause we've got. You know, maintenance that we have to do on the fire trucks and the, and the police cars, so we had to free him up at some point to be able to do that kinda stuff, so. The last two days, we've let him catch up in the shop, and I've been on the truck, so. We're making it happen. That's, that's the main goal right now.
And when do you start leaf pickup?
Uh, leaves will start October. I wanna say fifteenth. I don't think I put that in there.
So that's not far.
It's not far away.
From the perspective of staffing, how's that gonna impact?
Uh, the mowing guys, they double up as my leaf back, so at the very beginning from, from the middle of October to the end of October, unless we have just a real. Weird fall, uh, cold weather comes a lot earlier. Uh, those two weeks is pretty much a hit and miss anyway, so they just do kind of a, a scoping. Do it, and then they kinda bounce back and forth. When the frost finally gets here and docks the mowing out, then there'll be full-time leaves, usually through November and December. So, that's. Part of the reason Chad's been in shock, cause he's having to get the leaf backs ready, and if we have to order any parts, we wanna make sure we get them, and, you know, he's on a time crunch too, so. But that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Have you heard anything about, oh, probably they got sponsored the, uh, truck or treat in October?
I have not. That is a good, a good thing. I'll have to call Wes and ask. I don't know with the COVID and stuff, whether they're planning, I know they skipped last year.
Didn't do it last year.
Um, so I don't know whether he's planning on doing it, but I'll, I'll contact Wes and ask him and see if they're gonna do it again. I hope they do. Um, it's a great event. It's, it draws a lot of people, so I hope they do. I will definitely ask Wes about that. Because, yeah, let's see, this is September, October. Yeah, next month we'd have to do the, the road closure, uh, thing. Yes, okay. I'll ask.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thanks for all, your folks are doing the step up while you have folks out. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. No problem. Thank you.
All right, next is our finance department report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, it looks like the revenue's starting to roll in for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, if you see at the property tax, we're already at fifty-three percent, so we got a pretty good. Um, check over the month, so that's a good thing. Um, sales tax and all of that will start, um, receiving for this year, next month. So you'll see those numbers increase as well. Um, the few projects that I've been working on, the, um, clockwise, which is going to be our time clock system. The, um, PO module, uh, which is the purchase order module through our soft, uh, financial software. And analytic module, um, we're coming along quite nicely on that. There's been a little bit of a holdup because, um, in doing this, we realized. That the fire department and public works department were not on our server. So they kinda existed as far as their technology and computer and everything all on their own. And so we've had to, uh, I've been working with Memory Bank, well, Memory Bank's been doing the majority of the work. But, um, to get them on our server. So for one, that's gonna be better. Um, they'll have their data backed up, and they won't have to worry about losing data or backing up their data on jump drives, I think is what. I know the fire department's doing that now, so they're all will be on our server, and it'll be secure. And so once, um, we get all that finished, we can move, we should be able to move along on the rest of these things. And, um, we are evaluating on how we're gonna structure the office assistant and to, um. How we want to provide better overall service with that position. So we are still currently using Bonnie Staffing, and, uh, we, we like who they, we like Bernadette, and she's been doing a really good job while she's here. But as far as, uh, finance, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
I do. I have one. Um, I'm looking at governing body, and that's our best, like.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, cause I was getting ready to come at Peter reference it, but while I have him here, and he's sitting there beside you. What I've been noticing is, even now, we're, we're the board that always keeps getting information the day of. When it was handed out, either the day before, early before we had a meeting. And I thought we had talked about us getting some kinda iPads or laptops. This way, any information that can come out to us, we can already have it, or we can even have it here. I think it really came, uh. Evident to me that they, uh, last Thursday, when, uh, the lady came here, uh, Seventeenth Street. She was showing some things, and I know for a fact, looking off that TV for somebody like me, it's just, it's just crazy. It was easier. I started seeing it, trying to see it off my phone, cause it got sent to, 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 to our emails. And I enlarged it off my phone, but where I'm going with this, in our governing body, you got a line item in there. Um, reference to. Let me get down here to, um. apologize. Supplies. And I'm looking at twenty, twenty-two hundred ninety-one and two ninety-nine supplies and materials. Either way it goes, there's monies there that can help this board. Reference to seeing what you can do to, to supply Peter with the finance lady here. I don't care how you got to move some line items around, but is there any way you can assist us in that way? So we can quit doing this rambling through information that gets to us later. Cause I'm going to tell you something, at the end of the day, these decisions that we keep trying to make or have have to make sure we make you bring it back to us because we just got it, probably wouldn't have to happen so much if we could have it here. There's not a municipality that I don't even go to now where I see everybody else has laptops and we still, I don't know, but if you seen the news too, price of paper is getting ready to go up. There's a paper shortage right now. I mean, but we still killing trees here in Spencer. I mean, I don't, is there something that you can help us with on that? Both of y'all?
We certainly, uh, have in the budget this year to, and what we planned was, uh, Chromebooks for the board to use the digital agendas. Of course, uh, the agenda, I mean, the budget is designed so that, uh, that's for the, for the, for the year. So we do intend to proceed on that.
When do you, when you think your intentions can make that happen?
And, and I could certainly continue to talk with you all about the timing of, of when you'd prefer, uh, to, to see that as a group. And if you'd like us to proceed with getting quotes set up and getting those brought in, we can go ahead and do that if.
I see a bunch of heads shaking right now. I mean, it, it is those things. I mean, we're still getting paper and there's nothing wrong with us getting the agenda. That's, that's irrelevant. No, it's this new information that keeps coming to us and, and whether we have, you know, the paperwork right here in front of us, it comes later or it's just, it's just, we're killing trees. So. And you said we were going to do this anyway at our last budget, um, um, and back in July when we had a budget meeting May. And we're here almost going in October.
So is it the pleasure of the board to go ahead and move that forward as soon as we can, since we do have a budget?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the budget for Faith? All right. Here you go. Thank you. Thanks for the update. Right. And finally, our library report. And we have Ms. Craven that'll give that update.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor and Board of.
Good afternoon.
In the library, um, there's been a little bit of a drop in the numbers, um, according to Beverly. I'm not exactly sure why, but there's been a little bit of a drop. She stated here, um, statistics are here for, um, August and September. Um, she's also included in, um, as far as statistics, how many people that have been reached through the, um, library's Facebook page. And we have recently installed a computer for patrons' use at the library with a printer and it has its own, um, setup to where, um, patrons cannot access our server or any of the information. Do you guys have any questions?
With the printer, if paper's going up, what are we doing about the cost of that?
The cost of the, uh, printing, it is, I think it's twenty-five cents a page. It was put in with the budget.
Okay.
And it doesn't say if it's color or black and white. It's just one price.
Okay. So we are, we are charging for printing?
Yes.
Okay.
Eventually we'll make the library a park center for the town.
All right. Any questions on the library report? All right. Thank you, Stacy. All right. Next, uh, we have Peter's, uh, town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the board. And I certainly, uh, want to start off just by acknowledging, uh, the entire staff, uh, pulling together over the last month as, as, uh, we've had to juggle, uh, people being out, uh, due to COVID. And, uh, and appreciate everybody picking up, uh, for each other and working together. And, uh, and, uh, and also, uh, just how supportive everybody is, including the board, uh, as families experience the challenges uh, that come along with that. So I, I certainly wanted to acknowledge all that. Just a few highlights. We did receive the first tranche, as they call it, of ARP funding. Uh, our, half of our total funding, uh, was five hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. This has been booked in a restricted account while we wait further guidance, which I saw, uh, an update from the school government today. Uh, about, uh, that the feds have said the final rulings are going to still take some more time. And so the interim rulings still in place and the school government is saying, uh, it's smart to continue to wait and see while, while some of this stuff is developed, including the state budget, uh, to be adopted to see what type of leveraging opportunities will come from that. Uh, and as a reminder, local governments have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to obligate these funds and until the end of twenty twenty-six to expend them. And so, uh, we certainly will, uh, be working together, uh, including with the community to strategically plan how best to use these funds. Um, uh, going forward. And I know a lot of what we heard about last week, uh, is a, is a big related to our, uh, Seventeenth Street and is a big possibility of, of interest for, for our community for, uh, there and elsewhere. Uh, but, but we're, we're going to, uh, have a, a larger conversation about all that. I noted in your report about the, uh, Yacka River Park. And of course we heard about that earlier today, but, uh, I, I just want to acknowledge all the, the good partnership going on to, to continue having that, uh, move forward. It's very exciting for, uh, for us as an organization, but also for the community and I think even the region. And, uh, I also in the report provided some information we got, uh, related to, uh, the updated census data. Since, uh, our twenty twenty census population was three thousand three hundred eight, one point three percent growth over the last three years. Uh, county as a whole growing, uh, at a rate of six percent. Uh, and there was some, uh, data visualizer resources I've, uh, passed along in that as well. So. We also did close on our parking lot across the street on August nineteenth, uh, the lot next to the Pinocchio Restaurant. Now, uh, town owned, uh, will be, uh, paying that, uh, on an annual installments over the next three years. Uh, appreciate everybody working together on that.
Very good. And the other item you didn't cover was that we, uh, have received an expression of commitment for funding, uh, to kickstart our downtown Park Plaza Park in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from a, uh, private donor at this point. So, um, our goal is to be able to use, um, that initial, uh, kind of lead gift along with the momentum we have on the Yedkin River Trail to, um, start a capital campaign to get folks interested in giving to the park project as well as some of our other green space project, uh, around town. So be more on that this fall about kicking that off. But that's, uh, really exciting news. Um, we continue to have folks really interested, uh, philanthropists throughout our community that, uh, see the great things that Spencer is doing and the potential that some of these projects have. And so we're excited about that.
And if I may, one other item I'll note, uh, that may be of interest related to our construction project. Uh, things continue to move along there. There's sheet rock up in, going up in the building. I believe we're getting close to getting our electrical service established that will allow the building to start being, uh, closed in and conditioned and, and move on to some of the final, uh, finishes that, that need to await that. Uh, the latest, uh, project, I, uh, timeline I saw showed it, uh, a project closeout date of about, uh, the week of the nineteenth of November. So it's, it's, uh, our original estimate was somewhere between mid-October to mid-November. Uh, I'd say we're now in the mid to late November, uh, probably. And, and I know that the group planning the Winter Fest event is, uh, coordinating with us so that we can have a grand opening as part of the Winter Fest kickoff on Friday, the third of December. So we're, we're moving along. Uh, with that, we've also, uh, started coordinating with, uh, Duke Energy and, uh, Spectrum and others out there in terms of establishing the necessary services for the building, uh, and also, uh, with Duke on, uh, parking lot lighting. And with that, we're also wanting to coordinate with our neighbors. The Nances, uh, with the parking lot to make sure that, uh, we can proceed with updated lighting in a coordinated fashion. So, just wanted to also mention all that.
So a couple of questions on the construction, one with the, the construction schedule being pushed out just a little bit. Um, I know as of a little over a month ago, they were still on target to hit what really amounted to be mid, mid to mid late Nov- or, uh, October. So what's been the, the change over the past month?
And I don't, I think, uh, I don't know that it's changed in the last month, but, uh, one of, one of the change orders that came through, we had the five change orders. I think one of them included a ten-day, uh, and it could have been the last one. And I think that was because of the transformer issue causing a delay in the electrical service getting set up, uh, to allow it to proceed through the next milestones. But that is the final project closeout milestone that I mentioned in terms of the week of November nineteenth. There was the CO, uh, and other things are actually coming prior to that. So I, I think that is, that is really a date that would be, you know, the final part process. I think if I had this scheduled in front, in front of me right now, I could, I could read off some milestones that would.
Is that something you can provide to the board? So they can have an updated overall project schedule and see that?
And the best time, uh, that we get those at the end of the month. Uh, so the, the schedule I have right now was provided at the end of August. Um, and I could either provide that at this time, or if you prefer to see what it looks like at the, uh, meeting at the end of this month or, or both.
I think if you can go ahead and send the one from August and then, then just start between now and the end of the project, just make sure the board has updates each month.
Sure.
I'm getting, getting interested in antsy.
Indeed.
I mean, if, if there are any penalties when the contractor did not finish first.
Uh, yes, there are liquidated damages. They're very small though, I believe. Um, but, um, again, that was one of the things. If there was indeed, I don't recall in the change order, an extension of ten days, but if that is the case, that, that effectively extends the contract date and we're, you know, that allows them that additional time. Um, but yeah, if they go beyond that and don't have justification to a change order or, you know, they don't have the weather delays.
As long as they go make sure we do get, get our time done.
Yep, exactly. We need to continue to push.
And, and I believe the contract, um, the, the contract established a timeframe that these, these dates we're talking about are still well within.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it may have been a fourteen-month window, you know, that the contract originally set up. So I.
Yeah. All in all, I think the projects continued to move schedule-wise pretty well. Um, the other question I had was relative to scheduling another tour for the board. I know we said we were going to do that a few times during construction. I'm thinking that's probably a good time now before they, with sheet rock up now, but then know the space will look a lot different. So if there's a convenient time over the next two weeks or so to get the board an opportunity to see it, that'd be great.
Okay, sure.
Sledge.
I'm guessing since we're talking later in November, then the board of elections will use this facility again for the election?
I would think so. Have we, have you had any conversation with them?
So early, and I, my recollection, uh, earlier in the year, they reached out, I think to let us know of election dates and, uh, and our, my recollection at that time was, uh, that this would be the place, uh, even if for some reason, which, e- even if for some reason we were already moved in over there, this, this would like, because of the way they have to publish in advance polling places and such, this would be the place for this year.
And this is the place people are familiar with, right? So at least until next go around when we can publicize and, and make sure people know the new place. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, Peter, going, going back to what you talked about, uh, in terms of the lighting for the parking lot. I know that Joel, uh, said that Duke Energy was going to come in and update that lighting. Do they have a time schedule that they, they know when they're coming? It's going to be next month or?
We, we don't yet. And what happened was this process started in April and, uh, Duke subs out their work in this area with, uh, an, another company who comes out. We've been on site, uh, and then we never heard back after following up, following up. And finally, uh, we were able to reach back out to, uh, Duke via our, uh, government affairs, uh, um, connection, uh, Randy Welch, who helped us get in touch with, with the right people. And they, they've now picked up the ball. Apparently the person who was helping us left and, uh, as of last week, we picked the ball back up. I think they talked about typically a six-week timeframe, but they were going to work to try to make sure this thing, you know, stays on track.
Are they just going to replace lights? I don't, I don't know. I was trying to think back to our schematic of, of the municipal building. But that, the lighting in that, uh, Hope Park Plaza is a physical. I mean, there's only like three poles there within, within the parking lot area. Um, and I think two of them have two lights, one has one, and then there's a couple of poles on the perimeter. But that, the, we've got, uh, events coming up, uh, next month and also in December.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we could get some more permanent lighting in there, uh, proper lighting.
The, the other thing too, though, Sam, keep in mind is they're going to go, right now, I think they've got sodium vapor lights in there. Everything now that Duke is doing on those are LED. So it will be a considerable difference just in the type of bulb that they're using on them. But they're talking about changing out poles and, and everything.
Okay. Yeah. So, so they're going, they will design us a solution and likely give us some options on the look. Uh, but, but at the end of the day, they'll design something that will probably light the light, the lot, light the lot. And, uh, but it will likely involve us, uh, preparing the way for them. Uh, we'll have to dig up some asphalt so they can run, uh, power from the street. Currently the lights are fed from the building, which isn't really the way it ought to be. And, and so those are some of the things that we'll have to plan out and, and that's what it'll take the time. But.
Did we, did, did we do a change order for, for the, like the panels and whatnot, the pallets to be changed?
For the building, for the building.
Right.
Yeah.
That's for the building itself.
Yeah. Yeah. This is for the lighting is a totally separate issue because Duke Energy provide, basically they enter into a contract with, they provide the lighting, you enter into a contract, you pay for the power that it uses. Um, but right now they're connected into the building and it's weird the way it's set up. It would be fine for a single owner of the building. But now that we've got multiple owners, all of those lights, my understanding is they're actually fed off of one part of the building for the entire parking lot. And so this will be an approach where now everything will be fed basically from the street as opposed to off of the building feed. And then Duke can coordinate how it's charged to the individual owners of the property for the power usage.
And that process is happening, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other coordination piece of that is, you know, making sure how do we coordinate with the future park that's going to go there too?
Yeah, we, we don't want to put in a bunch of lights that will have to get taken out. So we want to plan accordingly as we're designing the, the lighting.
Are we looking at the, um, original plan that was developed for the park in conjunction with the renovation of the building? Is that where we're?
So we have an existing plan for the park.
Right.
Um, that plan has not been bid separately.
Right.
But based on the initial bidding of the project and how far it came in over budget relative to what the rebid of the redesigned project was, that park's estimated, the value's estimated at about a million dollars.
Right.
And so there, we've been having discussions. Um, I think the thought is we are probably going to have uh, a landscape architect that specializes in parks to actually take a look at that as opposed to, um, the current plan that was developed by a building architect to see if there are ways to potentially revise that plan, um, so that it is still achieving the same objective of green space. So that it is still achieving the same objective of green space and recreation space and a place where. You can have concerts and things like that, but potentially not be quite as expensive. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying we're going to reevaluate the design. And I think that's part of that initial seed money that's been committed. Would be able to be used to go ahead and kickstart that process sooner rather than later of looking at it. The other thing I think that we want to make sure is we have community input on what that park.
Corners of the park with the granite. Monoliths and the and the balls that were on top, they they are around here some.
Peter has some other information too about some lighting that used to be in that park.
Would you like me to share that? Yeah, so. Actually, uh. Deborah, Deborah, the former Deborah Palmer. She's Deborah Crook, uh, I went to college with, uh, her son Matt, uh, we were. We were freshman year, uh, roommates and beyond and, uh. So anyhow. His grandmother, uh, Hilda Palmer, who, uh, people in this town have heard that name. Apparently, when the park was no longer a park, acquired two of the lamps that sat on top of, uh. A column. And, uh, they were, they have been at, uh, Matt's family home in Union County his whole life. Uh, his mother is, uh, looking to to downsize. And, uh, they're interested in getting those lights back to Spencer, uh, rather than just. Sell them off with their property, which was just really neat, and I had a opportunity to talk with with Matt about that. Earlier this summer and kind of shared with him where we were on the 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 plan and and I think at some point they wanted to come and. And talk, talk with y'all about about that and what it could look like, but kind of an interesting opportunity to connect back to. What what might have been there and. I think folks, and I think not just, uh. Hilda Palmer, but, uh, I unfortunately don't remember, was it T-Bone? People knew Mr. Palmer as well. Uh, and and so I think they'd like to be able to honor them as well through that and.
Whatever happened to the fountain? Sam, what'd you do with the fountain?
Dan Patterson probably knows where that went, because he's very knowledgeable about, uh. Where a lot of the artifacts, uh, you know, went once they left the park area. Reach out to him and see if he knows.
So one of the things I know that that is a goal, the individual that's. Committed the hundred thousand, you know, they're, they're not tied to any particular design, but the one thing they want to see are trees and green space. So that's really a a blank canvas for us, what our community might want in that, in that park.
As long as they're not crepe myrtles or.
All right, so we will move on to item number eleven, um, considering adopting an ordinance declaring a public nuisance, that's attachment seven. And this is in reference to the property that we heard, um, from Mr. Doby on during, um, public comment. And so Peter, is Mr. Osborne still with us? We can invite him in.
Thank you.
So this particular item dates back to a. Regarding a property that dates back months now that, um. We've been, our code enforcement's been working to try and get cleaned up, um, that has. Contributed to some of the issues. Related to. Some of the rats and issues that we've had in, uh. South Iredale Avenue area around four eleven, um, not obviously the sole, um, reason for that. But this, uh, is a contributing property. And so, Mr. Osborne, if you will, kind of maybe give us a brief history of. Uh, the process and procedures that we've walked through with this property owner to try and remedy the situation, what action has been taken? Um, and what, um, action remains needed at the property.
Through the process initially was to attempt to make, um, physical contact with him, talk to him face to face, Mr. Doby, who was here earlier. We spoke as on behalf, um, many of those temps. Fell, uh, without being able to talk to him, he's been quite the preclusive. And it's been quite the process to even get the chance to talk to him. Notice the violations have been sent to him, both properties where he's presently residing and. The property that's a question at four eleven South Iredale to make sure that he receives, uh, all the proper notifications. We had a hearing, was able to, uh, utilize his brother as a, um. An advocate for us to come in and talk to us back in, I believe it was June. Uh, to set up the process for him to, um. To agree to work with us, clean up the property. Through that, Mr. Jay Davies' attorney was with us and drew up some paperwork to help. With that hearing, we agreed to a thirty day cleanup process with significant progress. With an extension. Thirty days had transpired and had much, little to no change. Another thirty days went by and he made a little more progress, it's very slow. Uh, continue to try and reach out to him. Uh, with very little response, actually no response. And, uh. He's been, uh, once again, just when this guy's hard to get a hold of, he's kind of, um. I wouldn't say anti-authority, but he has some reservations about. The towns, uh. I guess you call it, it is motivations. So he's been very recluse, um, till recently, I've been able to get a hold of him, we've developed a rapport, and as you can see, I was able to get him to come in and just. To talk to you face to face. On his own behalf, um, and since we built that rapport up here recently. He's been actively working on his property, he's brought a U-Haul over there as he stated, and he's been loading it up and he's got about. I must, my estimation, about fifty percent of the property cleaned up. He's got, he had quite a bit out there, so it's a lot of work. He's done on his own, he's going through the process of finding out the items that he wants to keep, he feels are valuable and the rest is trash. And so he's taking the property that he wants to keep out to his old family plot out of Snyder Road. And putting it out there for now. And that's where we stand, he was been out there the past couple of days. Working on it without any provocation from me, and he was out there last Thursday and we spent a little while. So he's been actively working.
So he he's there working, taking the stuff that he wants to save, do you have any indication from him? Once he's done that. What he's planning to do, I mean, is he getting rid of the trash as well?
Yes, and and some of it he's actually put off to the side of the road. For the town pickup, it it's not a huge amount, it's not like some other places that, uh. Dumped out whole households on the side of the road for the town to pick up, it's, uh, it's very small in comparison. And I asked him to make sure he bagged that up so that the, uh, employees could pick that up quickly and move on, and he agreed to that. And so he's been quite cooperative with me here, uh, past couple of weeks. And he, in my opinion, he feels very, I I feel he's very sincere when he says he's trying to clean it up and he wants to clean it up. And so I'm.
So are you saying you don't want us to declare this as a nuisance?
No, no, I'm not saying that at all, no, I'm not saying that at all, you have a decision to make on your own, I I. I just think that he truly sincerely wants to clean it up, he just has trouble doing that. For whatever reasons, he's got some.
Decision is made off of what you're telling us, so. We're not trying to go out there and look, this is what you do, so from what you tell us, and I'm trying to get it from you directly, I. Sum it up, do you think we need to keep pushing forward with this?
Is he going, I mean, based on your opinion and and the interactions you've had with him, do you feel like it will be cleaned up? In its entirety?
I I think that it will eventually, if we if we not push the ordinance on him. He won't have the same sense urgency and I'll have to continue to try and work with him, not that he's being obstinate, it's just that he has different pace. And so I think that with the ordinance, it gives us that, the ability to say, hey, look, we've got this on the back burner, if you don't. Really continue to clean up, we're going to just do it for you, and so. He doesn't want to incur that cost that we're going to put on him for cleaning it up. Uh, him and I have discussed that, he understands, uh, but, um, in my opinion, I think the ordinance would be. Warranted just to kind of keep the the pressure on him, so to speak, and I'm not saying that in a mean way, just that. It keeps him incentivized to continue to work towards it. And and I can continue to work on my rapport with him so he and I have a good working relationship.
What kind of time period do you think it'll take?
At the, at the process, well, over the timeframe that he's worked on it. It was slow in the beginning and it's kind of sped up here recently. I I think with the cooler months, if he has trouble working in the heat, uh, as he stated earlier. He might be able to work a little faster. And we can put a timeline on that ordinance so that way we give him a benchmark to.
That's what I was going to ask, because that's basically what he asked the board for, for with some additional time. I'm in agreement though, is we need to continue to have some way to ensure that this gets done. Uh, and I would rather he do it on his own accord than us have to to go in there for him. So right now, this ordinance is written such that, I mean, it's basically giving the town authority to go in. Remediate the situation as well as demolish structures should they need to be, the way that it's written. Um, what it doesn't have is anything in here related to a extension. Or a time period, basically, if we were to approve this tonight, gives the town. Authority to go ahead and move forward with, um, remediating this property basically tomorrow. So that's a question for the board, if you want to declare a nuisance. Whether or not you want to do that, and then if you do, is there a time stipulation you want to put on that, do you want to give him thirty days? To address it on his own, and then we say we go in after that. Uh, Jay's here, Jay, I'll invite you maybe forward to. Provide any legal perspective on this.
I I think it would be wise, it 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 should be noted that he's gotten active since we. Published the ordinance and published it to him and said that it would be on tonight. He he's gotten active in cleaning this thing up. It would be my suggestion that you adopt the ordinance, uh, declaring it a nuisance. Uh, if you, uh, you you can do it either of two ways, you can, uh, you you can. Either just instruct staff to give him thirty days or sixty days and report back to the board before any actions taken. Or you can. Amend the ordinance to insert. Uh, not to be acted upon. You know, before thirty days, I I I think it would be sufficient for you to adopt the ordinance. Tell staff to give him at least thirty days and report back at the next meeting before any actions taken on the ordinance. I I don't, I I don't think our intent is to actually go at this point. Um, and and do anything. Because he is active, my concern is that is that he'll go inactive. Um, if we don't adopt the ordinance. Um, as he said tonight, when. He he mentioned your prior enforcement person said, if you fix the bushes, I won't worry about the backyard, he said. If you let me get by with it, I'll get by with it. And and but James has developed a a rapport with him, as he said, so. Uh, I I just think we should adopt the ordinance declaring it a nuisance, instruct staff not to take action on it before. Thirty days and report back to the board to get authority to do anything.
I've just got, uh, three comments, have the neighbors said anything more about it or made any more complaints? So that kind of has taken care of itself, the.
Uh, some of the neighbors have moved away. Because of the rat issue that they're concerned she was pregnant, Miss, Miss Harris was pregnant, she didn't want to raise her child in that environment. And I have not had any other, uh. Contact with the neighbors in reference to this property.
Okay, and another comment, I heard you mention that you had addressed his brother. I don't know if David would be open to maybe you talking to his brother again, because I think his brother could help maybe make sure that. He stays on task and gets that done, if if you can do that professionally, since you've already talked to him once. And finally, and I've already talked with someone on the staff, I've heard complaints on Snyder Street, of course, that's out of our jurisdiction, it's. ETJ, but those neighbors are upset about all that stuff that's winding up down there. Ah, I don't know what can be done about that, cause you know, it's.
There there is some cleanup go, cleanup going out there off of Snyder Road, it it's primarily the pallets that they're cleaning up right now. Uh, so that was, uh, the county code enforcement working on them to get the pallets. And so I've been in contact with Howard Junior, his brother, and I've got a good rapport with him as well. And I know that his sister from Okinawa Betty has also been contacting David, so they're they're all working together to kind of help motivate him to do this.
All right, so you've heard from staff and you've heard the legal perspective, what's the board's pleasure on this?
The legal perspective. I agree with Jay, let's go with that, because this way too, it it looks a little humane that. He's getting that time, that little bit of time as well to go ahead and finish, I would rather prefer him try to get it up than us paying for it to get it up, so.
And he did suffer devastating losses, like it's wiped out and. It was so sudden and everything, so I I have no problem with doing an extension.
And I just want to say one thing on David's behalf, as he did comment to me that he appreciated the way that we handled the situation. To give him the opportunity to go through the the cleanup process instead of just coming in there and just. Scooping everything up and then throw them a bill, so he he did appreciate our our approach.
All right, so you have the.
Let me introduce something too. Here, here's my perspective on, this property has been a problem property for a long, long time. Before you, before you came, Jess. And it's like, well, I'll just ignore it, it'll go away. If it wasn't for this, he probably would have never done anything. And so I agree that we should pass it and give him the extension. Just simply, in fact, you know, give him a, give him a chance, like we, you know, uh, suggested by JD's. But I think that we need to pass it, because if he doesn't, then we need to take care of it, because. We don't want to lose residents because of someone that, uh, stonewalls and refuses to walk.
Agreed, okay. So on your ordinance declaring that property a public nuisance at, uh, four eleven South Iredale, I won't read the entire ordinance, but you have the ordinance before you. I would, uh, if there is a motion, I would make, uh, the request, the, there be an amendment. To section three A, and that that be the cost of removal, not PF removal.
Section three.
Section three.
Section three at the top, it's, there's a typo, it should be cost of removal.
Oh, okay, okay, my pages are baffled, so I was seeing a section three.
All right, so with that change, is there a motion to approve? This ordinance?
I made the motion that we approve, um, the, uh. The demolition. Remove all property, both real and personal, that creates the nuisance ordinance, but. Want to say it again, what was it? But we're going to do what?
Changing section three?
Changing section three.
The cost.
The cost. We're going to change that to of.
Okay, so there's a motion by Ms. Hovis, is there a second?
And this will.
Oh, and that gives, we also need to make sure that.
We can do that afterwards. Sir. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Morgan. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed? Right, that is approved. All right. And so now the board can make a uh, directive to staff to give Mr. Doby an additional thirty days before any of his ac- action is taken and to report back to this board uh, at our next meeting.
Would we put a placard up at this point to say it is a public nuisance? That's the, that's that's section four. Would it go up now or would would we extend it thirty days?
I think go ahead and put it up now.
Yeah, that's what Jay said. We need to go ahead and do it now.
Right, make notice that it is, and then we can, Mr. Osborne can continue to work with it.
Then we can verbally say now this, just now order staff to go ahead and give, extend the thirty days.
Is there a motion then to extend, to direct staff to to extend it thirty days?
So moved.
There's a motion by Ms. Hovis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. All in favor? Opposed, that is approved as well. All right. Thank you, James, for staying on top of this and.
Thank you very much.
Seeing this through. Really appreciate it. All right. The next item is to consider authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the town for the North Carolina Transportation Museum.
Yes, this was uh, provided to you at pre-agenda, uh, an agreement with the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for the police services, you know, security services we provide at North Carolina Transportation Museum. We we discussed this at pre-agenda related to uh, some adjustments from the existing agreement and that this would be for one year until September of next year.
All right. So with that, are there any questions on the agreement that was presented on Thursday? Yes, Mr. Bitch?
Yeah, uh, as this uh, agreement is between North Carolina Department of Natural Cultural Resources and the town of Spencer. Um, the, the only question that I have is in regards to the uh, the amount of uh, compensation that we're going to be paid to maintain a police presence and to have them uh, perform the acts that they would like to have performed. Um, I'm looking at roughly um, sixteen hundred hours uh, per year. And they have um, annual total of uh, twenty-nine thousand plus um, for a pay which comes up to about eighteen dollars an hour to have a a police presence that is equipped and insured to secure this space. But I just think that the the dollar amount is a little too low to compensate the town of Spencer for providing that service. Now, I'll open it up for anyone else to comment on that.
Peter, you look. The the sixteen hundred hours, that's where I'm, I I'm not sure if, did that, is that a figure that you?
Well, they they say they want to walk through between six PM and ten PM, so that's four hours.
No, 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 no. It's it's not the entire time. It's basically they want a single walkthrough during that time period.
Yeah, so with with all those buildings uh, every day, seven days a week, I would assume. So how much, how much time, how much, what's the dollar worth of the involvement of police presence at the Transportation Museum on a weekly basis? Uh, to have someone there who's armed and equipped and insured by the town of Spencer.
And so that it's not to have somebody there all the time, uh, the 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 core of it is uh, one walkthrough and five drive-through visits per night, uh, and one uh, daytime uh, patrol of thirty minutes uh, a a week. So I I my my guess would be that, you know, there may be uh, two to four hours per week. And and Chief James may have a better number, but two to four hours per week on average may be the time that that we're spending there.
Yeah, I think that's maybe the question boils down to with what they're asking for, with the walkthrough and with the drive-through plus the thirty minutes. What does that add up to on a weekly basis?
Police report, he's, Jane, Chief James has that itemized out, uh, North Carolina uh, NCTM foot patrol and also across from it, PC.
How many hours would they have on there?
Uh, well, it's.
It's broken down by number of visits. It's not, is Chief James still here?
He is, let me see.
There's forty.
Forty-seven walkthroughs within the month and uh, one hundred forty-two drive-throughs.
Bobby, will maybe pull up my calculator and do some math. That's a great question there, Bobby.
I mean, from, I think I saw a video on the walkthrough, actually, the officer gets out of the car, goes up to the door, drives the door, and they also have keys that they go in. Uh, here, here's the chief. Chief, the actual um, walkthrough at the Transportation Museum involves an officer approaching on foot every building, trying the locks, opening the door, going in the premises, coming back out and going around to all of the other buildings, doing the same thing every night, seven days a week?
Yes, and we're spending probably forty-five minutes to an hour. It may be longer than that at times, you know, we may find a door that's unlocked and we may have to wait on the key holder. Uh, but my view is we're compensated pretty well and want to maintain that good working relationship we have with the Transportation Museum. Uh, when I came here, it was about twenty-six thousand. We've increased it once. Uh, and the biggest loss that we occur occasionally is a flat tire from nails from the drive-throughs. Uh, but I I think what, what we're compensated seems reasonable for the time that we expend. And there are times when we have a supervisor and an officer or two officers. We'll send two and split it up, so we may not be there as long, but we're using two people to do it.
So based on what they're providing, how many hours per roughly with with between drive-through, foot patrol and?
I would say with us adding what we have on Tuesdays for the thirty minutes, five and a half to six hours roughly.
Okay, so let's say six hours conservatively. What's the, what's the amount per year?
Oh, twenty-nine. Twenty-nine thousand two forty-seven.
So. It's closer to about ninety-four dollars an hour. We're spending six hours a week over fifty-two weeks. That's a total of it's a total of three hundred and twelve hours a year. And so when you look at that twenty-nine thousand, it's right at ninety-four dollars an hour.
And 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 the, the salary and what what's the cost for us to put someone there?
Yeah, so the cost of a officer per hour with benefits is what? Peter, do you have an idea?
Probably twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour with benefits. Uh, of course, then that's going to cover fuel, equipment, training, I'm sure.
I think the perspective is we come out making, making money off of that service.
Certainly don't feel like this amount is unreasonable. It's in line with what we've done uh, for many years and and that's why we recommend it for your consideration.
Okay.
Other questions?
I would draw my comments.
No, it's right.
It's, it's, and we're not, it's not the Transportation Museum that's feeling the costs of this. It would be the
Cultural.
Department of Natural and Cultural Affairs.
Right.
Resources.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, you're announced. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm a.
Motion by Mayor Protem. I see a hand down there. Mr. Miller, is that a second?
Second.
All right, that is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed? That is approved unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. All right, and the next item is item thirteen. And that is for the town of Spencer to consider a resolution calling on the town of Spencer to adopt a non-discrimination ordinance. And you have a copy of that before you as presented by Orderwoman Sledge.
I do not know what I've done with all my papers.
And so with that, um, Orderwoman Sledge, would you like to read that resolution for us, please?
Certainly, we'd be happy to. Um, this is a resolution calling on the town of Spencer to adopt a non-discrimination ordinance. Whereas the protection to all members of our community is vital for the health and safety of our community. And whereas December first, twenty twenty was the date of expiration for a prohibition of House Bill one forty-two passed March of twenty eighteen that prevented local governments from expanding local discrimination protections. And whereas municipalities throughout North Carolina, including municipalities of Hillsborough, Carboro, Chapel Hill, Durham, Greensboro, Asheville, Greenville, Wilmington, Charlotte, Raleigh, as well as the city of Winston-Salem and Orange and Durham counties have adopted new or expanded non-discriminatory ordinances which are in addition to currently existing laws such as the U.S. Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, the Equal Employment Opportunities Commission Act, and the American with Disabilities Act, strength and protections of various protected classes of individuals. And whereas recently passed nondiscriminat- nondiscrimination ordinances have expanded protections for gender identity and expression. And whereas many municipalities have adopted the Crown Act, ensuring protection against discrimination based on race-based hairstyles, extending statutory protection to hair texture, design, and stylistic expression, expressions. And whereas the town of Spencer strives to be inclusive and celebrate diversity, it is important and urgent that all individuals feel welcome and safe in our municipality. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Aldermen supports the adoption of inclusive, non-discrimination ordinances that prohibits discrimination in, but not limited to places of public accommodations, employment, workplace setting, and contractual relationships on the basis of race, hair, or hairstyles as per the Crown Act, ethnicity, creed, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, national origin or ancestry, marital or familial status, pregnancy, military status, religious belief or non-belief, age and medical condition, disabilities or disorders. And be it further resolved that we, the Board of Aldermen, call for prompt decisive action to protect the residents of and visitors to the town of Spencer and direct our town attorney to draft an ordinance or ordinances to incorporate existing U.S. federal and North Carolina state laws and expanded protections which are not now included in the Spencer Code, Code of Ordinances. This the ninth, thirteenth day, fourteenth day of September twenty twenty-one.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sledge. All right. And so my understanding, Ms. Sledge, maybe if you can get, well, if you can give a quick background on um, the reasoning for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate you doing that. Um, my understanding is that our current ordinances don't specifically speak to this and uh, that there is a desire to pass an ordinance that uh, does speak to this.
Well, we have, um, we, in our, in our policy manual, we have multiple references to anti-discrimination and protections for protected classes of citizens and and that is covered there. But nowhere in any of our ordinances is there any mention at all of the fact that we do not condone discrimination for any reason. And and with um, some of the, the Crown Act is is um, a movement that's nationwide to recognize the fact that people of color have hair textures and styles that are different from some of other nationalities. And this has just become um, uh, I guess in some areas, it's become um, a conflict. And I I just feel that because Spencer, we are trying to be sure that everyone is welcome here, that we welcome our visitors, we welcome our citizens. We want protection for those people, that this is something that we need to address as a part of our Code of Ordinances.
And as I understand it, you know, while our personnel policy addresses our staff, this is a way for our board to say that we welcome all folks to Spencer and that we uh, we do not condone discrimination of any type.
Exactly.
Okay, very good. So with that, are there any questions or discussion on this?
Well, I have a couple of comments. Uh, protect these people from whom? Uh, if you get up here on the backside of this proclamation prohibits discrimination in, but not limited to places of public accommodations, employment. Now, there's nothing in here about people that are folically challenged, but I can tell you one thing that uh, you'll get a lot of pushback from fire departments because uh, you cannot have a beard. And you can't have uh, an overabundance of hair simply because of the fact that you can't cram that overabundance of hair into a nomex hood and get your helen on and get packed up to go into a structural fire. I just, I think this I don't think it's needed personally, and that that's my personal opinion. I I just think it opens up a, uh, another can of worms, especially uh, in terms of uh, employment, uh, yeah, for firefighters, for uh, for police officers. Yeah, there, we already have laws on the books uh, that uh, prohibit any type of discrimination. I just don't think that uh, you know, uh, this is necessary.
Well, we don't have it in our ordinances though. And I think that was one of the points that uh, the alderman was making. Was that while you may have all of the protections through all federal and state laws in regards to discrimination, we don't have it in our ordinances.
Yeah. But if you do this, would that supplant other requirements?
Cannot, it cannot. You cannot, you cannot uh, over legislate.
Can't usurp state or federal law at municipal level.
Right.
This, this is all underneath.
Yeah.
And I think um, I think they're still working on the Crown Act if I'm not mistaken. I think that's that's being proposed through the state. So I think once, once that does become legislation and becomes law, then we can have a jump on it and say that it's in our ordinances also. So um, I understand JD's is probably the one that can prepare.
Correct.
The information to create an ordinance. But but just, but just to your point, um, I think occupationally, I think that there are circumstances where you're right, you cannot fit a hood and go into a fire. You know, there's certain things that, uh, when I worked for the post office and and some of the uh, uh, the clerks were keying packages on a belt, you cannot, can't have long hair flying out there without it being tied up. So the restaurant worker cannot have loose hair flying around while they're serving food and stuff like that. So I think um, but at the same token, you can't say to that waitress, your hair is too long, you're fired. You know, or just style this person over this table, don't want you serving food with your hair like that, you know, but so.
So in the case of a firefighter, for instance, we can't, just because somebody comes and interviews with us, we can't not hire them because they currently have a beard. However, there is an expectation though, as they come onto the force, that
The job requirements.
That the job requirements from a safety standpoint, they would have to make sure that they meet those requirements. But it's basically saying that you're not. But it's basically saying that you're not going to not hire somebody or you're going to fire somebody based on the way they look. So. Okay, all good points. Any further discussion or questions? All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adopt?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt all of this Sledge's resolution.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Bish.
I'll say it.
And the second by Ms. Hovis, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? All right, and that is approved. Thank you all. Ms. Sledge, thank you for your time on that. Or thank you for the discussion.
Consideration.
All right, next item is to consider a resolution authorizing COVID-nineteen sick leave. And so Peter, earlier, we asked him to work, to prepare something that might be a resolution for us to look at, and we asked him to do that, I guess, last Thursday evening. And so what is before you is a proposed draft resolution that would authorize COVID-nineteen sick leave time to fully vaccinated, full-time employees. And so Peter, I know we have Jay in here as well, here, we might want to invite him in at this point in time.
Did you find this?
No.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I've got a copy, I've got one. I can't find the other stuff that Peter gave us.
All right, welcome back.
Mayor, if I, if I will, this draft is a, an adaptation of a resolution that was adopted in another municipality. It is something that ties the benefit of sick leave to vaccination status. This is provided just for a starting point of a discussion per your request. The board could consider alternatives to this, such as whether or not too tight a vaccination status at all, or if it might have a stepped approach where some level of time would be afforded for a partial vaccination versus full. So I just wanted to offer this out there for the board's request as a starting place.
Okay, so questions? I have one right off the bat, and that is relative to item three, where you talk about the employee providing a copy of the vaccination card and proof of a positive COVID-nineteen test result, or either that individual or a member of their family or household, or that they must have a known exposure as displaying symptoms and is seeking diagnosis. I guess my question, too, is, the other aspect of that is where they are requested to quarantine by a medical provider or the health department, because we don't specifically address that, but I think we need to, because we currently have, have a situation like that where, and that's typically what we're going to see, is the health department, when we consult with them, is going to say that our, that individual needs to quarantine. And I think that was one of the big things about this is where we have a case where maybe they aren't even positive, but we as the employer are telling them, because the health department or medical provider has told, told us that we need to have them quarantined. Because I can think of one instance in particular where it says, or must have a known exposure is displaying symptoms and is seeking diagnosis. Well, that one case had a known exposure but wasn't displaying symptoms and didn't have to seek a diagnosis. Does that make sense? Jay, is that a reasonable addition to that?
Yes, sir, and you're saying that's whether or not they're symptomatic.
Right.
Yeah. I just want to get the language.
Because what, what we've been asked to do by the health department in a few cases is have that employee quarantine just because they've had a exposure in their family, but they have not.
Right.
Themselves been displaying symptoms or been diagnosed.
And two, Jay, how does this all stack up against HIPAA laws?
HIPAA is designed to prevent a covered provider from disclosing information outside of the patient. It, it, it doesn't apply to this. When an employee voluntarily discloses status to gain some benefit that the town grants for that status, that's a voluntary disclosure to the town. We obviously wouldn't disclose that outside of our personnel. But, but no, HIPAA is designed to protect covered entities from disclosing health information of an individual outside of lawful communication.
Any questions? I guess maybe the fundamental question for the board is, you know, I think we agreed we wanted to be able to provide that time to employees, but the fundamental question is, do you want to tie that to vaccination status?
Do you want to tie in the vaccination?
Do you want to tie being able to authorize COVID-nineteen sick leave and an amount up to eighty hours based on if the employee is vaccinated, if they're full-time? And the full-time is because we don't pay, we don't do benefits to part-time staff, but full-time, fully vaccinated employees of the town.
You almost have to, right?
Yeah. Suppose someone had stopped, I'm sorry, Bob.
Okay, okay.
If someone had had one, the one shot, and never got the second.
That would not, that would not count as fully vaccinated.
No, I know, but I would like to motivate them to get the shot.
And this is a way to do that.
Yeah, so I think, and even if they haven't gotten it, I mean, it, I don't know if maybe some, I don't know how to do this, but if it motivated them to go do it after they recovered, I mean, I don't know if we want to be punitive, I guess is what I'm saying.
Right.
But I do want to get, would like to get them motivated if they agreed to do it because it's a good benefit for them. And I think it's fair, and I'm glad that this was brought up so that these people won't have to use their time, because so many of us can work from home, so I like that, especially like that.
But the only question is, though, is, well, not the only question, I'm sure there more. One of the questions is that, are we really being fair to all employees? For instance, if, if you caught pneumonia, because you didn't take a pneumonia shot, you wouldn't get any additional time, you wouldn't get an additional eighty hours of time off for that, you would have to use your sick time, right? So no one knows when they're going to get sick or how. And just because a person did not vaccinate themselves and they got contracted by COVID, so we, we will give them eighty hours on top of whatever their, their sick time is. You know, so I don't know, there's, there's got to be some type of quality there somewhere where we're not being overly generous and we're not being unfair to the, you know, people that are caught up in this situation, so.
Yeah, so I, I think part of, you know, this is, we're in a different world now, the past year and a half, compared to other illnesses. And so I think, you know, part of this is, and there's no other situation that we've experienced where we're requiring people to quarantine because of a disease that's out there. And so, you know, how do we address that if we're asking or telling folks that they need to quarantine, whether they're positive or not, because that's the situation we've got, that they have to take basically what amounts to be two weeks of leave, which a lot of them, especially if they're new to the town, don't even have that a lot of times, or basically you're going to use it all at that one, one point in time. And I think this is for a very specific purpose.
Well, this is for full-time mostly, to not part-time, because I already know, like, a lot of the part-timers, like, we'll use firefighters as a good example, but full-time jobs in Salisbury. So how do we pay them for being out sick? And they got a full-time job over in Salisbury, and they got sick time over there as well, and they get paid sick. So it's, I guess it's one of those slippery slopes, if you try to bring in part-timers along with the full-timers. All I know right now is we're just trying to protect everybody, because right now we don't have it at all.
And I think, you know, one of the things with the vaccination status, and I know, you know, our board is kind of, we're split on where we, what we think about that, and that's totally fine. The reality is, we've got to look as an employer, you know, what, based on what we've seen, what reduces the severity if somebody catches it? What provides an added level of protection for our staff? And, you know, one of the things we've seen is that the vaccine can't help with that. And so if there's a way to incentivize that without requiring the people get it, because I don't want to require that people get it personally, because I think that's a personal choice. And Sam, I know we talked about that, whether you wear a mask or whether you get vaccinated is a personal choice.
My argument is, still today, there's conflicting information out there, and more and more information is growing. You're, you've got more and more people that have been totally vaccinated, have had both shots, and they're dying, okay? There, the D variant, there's also an E variant, which I read in.
And an L and an M, and there are all sorts of things out there.
And this thing, here's my point, this thing is never going away. It will be with us until we croak, one way or another. And future generations will have to deal with it. It's a flu, it's a variant of the flu, and flus don't go away, they go and hibernate, and they come back out at an opportune moment of.
But the key is, whatever we can do as a society to reduce the severity of it, that, you know, and so looking at it from a town employer perspective, what can we do to help hopefully reduce the severity of it? And if incentivizing staff in a way to consider getting the vaccine is still leaving it to their personal choice, I think that is a good, good compromise to the issue at hand.
I think, I think the problem that I'm having with this is, is that who is sending this employee home? You know, with, you know, in a way, you're putting yourself in as a medical professional that has told this person, well, you, you got cold, you need to.
No, we're not, it's the health department, it's the health department. So Peter, I.
Doesn't say that in here?
Peter, speak to our, or, or maybe Stacy or Peter, speak to our process that we've been going through when we have either a positive test or we've got a exposure.
Yeah, so we're asking staff to, if, say, a staff person says, somebody just called me and said they tested positive, well, they need to then call the health department and get guidance, and then the health department will tell them, ask them various questions. Right now, the health department guidance is if you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to quarantine unless you start displaying symptoms, but you should wear a mask in public, and you should do various things. And so the guidance comes from the health department about what to do and how to handle the situation. And then as we, if we as an employer know, if somebody is indeed positive and they have exposed others in the workplace, potentially it's the same thing. We, we want them to, at that point, get in touch, and we get in touch with the health department to get their guidance on the situation on a case-by-case basis.
So the health department is not going to call you up and say, one of your employees came down here for a test, and we find out that he is positive, so therefore, he should quarantine, all right? I mean, he's exhibiting symptoms, so he should quarantine. Are they going to call you up and say, X. Jones is gonna?
No, but it's, there, there's likely going to be a contact to the individual affected either by the person that they exposed them, or through the, the health department may contact person directly. And then, you know, they, so the communicate, we have to, our staff has to communicate with us about this, too. I mean, that's part of it, but no, we may not, I think they would get involved directly with us if, if we turned into a situation with a cluster, you know, where they start to work it directly with us. We had multiple people starting to have linked cases here, which fortunately we have not, we, our exposures really have been coming from outside of the workplace.
So going, going back to my experience on the post office years ago, I put in, like, almost twenty years there. If, if we had, if we had an employee who got hurt on the job, his leg is kind of looking like this when it should be looking like this. We can't tell him, go home, or go see your doctor. Post office would use one of the postal cars, get, take him to, a supervisor would take him, I was a supervisor, would take him to the hospital where we have a relationship with the post office, wait for the doctor to diagnose him and tell him, yeah, his leg is broken. They fill out a report, and, and believe me, doctors, they don't like to fill out forms either.
Hurts when you do it that way, don't do it that way.
Yeah, so they would, they would let us know through the paperwork they, they sign off on, saying that, yes, in fact, this person has a broken leg.
Yes.
So then the supervisor could say, we're going to take it back to the manager and say, yeah, this guy has a broken leg, and he needs to stay home, whatever. But at least we got some type of verification, in fact, that the injury did happen, the mal injury or whatever. But in, in this situation, it's almost like a self, a self-report type situation which could open itself up to a lot of abuse. I don't feel good today, and I don't really feel like digging no ditches today. I'm going to call up and say, hey, look, I don't feel so good, I got a fever, blah, blah, blah. I'm going to get a, a rapid test, which comes up with eighty percent false positives and stuff like that, and tell you, I got a positive test on my rapid test, blah, blah, blah. So I need eighty, I need eighty hours, the next eighty hours, and I may not have been sick at all. You know what I'm saying? So how do we protect ourselves as a town? You know, and, and it's unfortunate, because I know several individuals in this room have, fortunately, they're, they're surviving, have gone through the drama of COVID-nineteen, and, and just even getting that diagnosis of being, being positive is horrendous. But at the same token, we want to make sure that we're just not falling for.
You don't want to be taken advantage of.
Yeah.
And I, I get that completely. I do think that item three, you know, what we're looking for, if you're tying it to vaccination is the, the proof of the vaccination. And then the second, then, is proof of a positive COVID-nineteen test for either yourself or a member of your family. So you have to provide that documentation. The other, then, is that known exposure, displaying symptoms, and seeking diagnosis. And that may be where some of the ambiguity is, that's the one that maybe leaves it open a little bit, that you, you know, how do you prove that you've had a known exposure? Those sorts of things. And then, you know, the other, though, that I had mentioned adding is where a situation where an employee is asked to quarantine by the medical provider or health department, because in that case, they have no control of it, they've been asked or told they need to quarantine. And as long as they can provide documentation that they've been asked to quarantine, typically it's the town that's going to get that, that notification. If it's where we have to call the health department, they're going to say, no, they need to quarantine. And so we know firsthand that that's the case.
Would, would we accept those homes?
Would we accept those COVID-19 claims?
Well, I mean, that's one of the things they've talked about trying to roll out many, many more of those, make those more accessible. But again, at the same time, you know, one of the things with any other diagnosis is typically we require our doctor's notes. So Jay, what's your perspective? Not to put you on the spot.
Uh, I mean, we were just talking about that last sentence in, in bullet three, um, that, that seems to be giving some, some problems because it's, you know, and, you know, the, the exposure, you know, the only reason they have to quarantine if they've been vaccinated and they have an exposure is because they're displaying symptoms. And, you know, if they're displaying symptoms, I guess you could probably require another positive test if they're symptomatic and positive. It is the only thing that I think would give you the assurance, but, um, but, you know, if you're trying to identify places for.
I mean, I, yeah, I guess almost you have to provide proof of the test. You have to prove that you're positive or you've been, you've been required by the health department to quarantine. Because that will cover, right, if the health department or medical provider says you need to quarantine, that's going to address the issue if you've had an exposure or if somebody around you is, is positive, right? Because, I mean, that's, in, in our case with a couple of our situations, that's been the case. We, the employee is not positive, but has, has, has somebody that lives with them that may be positive. And it wasn't even that they had to provide proof of the COVID-19 test, it was the health department said you'd have to quarantine, right?
Yep. That was the recommendation, yeah. I, I don't know about the specific scenario, but, um.
Come on Jay, you can fix this, you can fix this.
That last line.
So what if we just get rid of that last line? And make it contingent solely upon a positive COVID-19 test result for either the employee or a member of their direct household or that they have been recommended to quarantine by a medical provider or health department.
I believe that, I believe that, uh, line is really, because it's vaccinated people, it is trying to, uh, capture vaccinated symptomatic people awaiting test results. That, that's in essence what it is.
And I think, so I think that if you, to answer the question, Mayor, I think if you change the very end and is seeking diagnosis to what Peter just said and is awaiting test results, because the test results will determine what happens next.
But the reality is, right, if we're saying they're going to take leave, by the time that we approve that as COVID leave as opposed to sick leave, they're going to have a diagnosis.
But you can re-characterize the leave.
Right.
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 So, so you don't have to make a choice on the spot, what type of leave is being activated? You can activate paid leave and then re-characterize it if the diagnosis is, is positive and it fits under your policy. You can re-characterize that as COVID.
Right. But as it stands right now, that, and is seeking diagnosis, leaves it open-ended.
Right, and, and, and I would just say that, that it should be just awaiting test results.
And also just not to leave out guys like Sam out in, in the, in the woods by themselves. An unvaccinated person.
I'm not out in the woods by myself. I can assure you, there are several million people that, uh, are in the woods with me, okay?
I'm trying to help you, hold on. So an unvaccinated person who is an employee, a full-time employee, who wears a mask every day, but he's not vaccinated or hasn't gotten around to becoming vaccinated, begins to experience symptoms and he goes to get tested and he found that he is positive. Is he also going to be allowed to take 80 hours?
Not the way it's proposed.
Not the way this is written. If that's the desire of the board, then this would need to reflect that.
That's, that's what we're saying, if this is tied to vaccination status, this would only be eligible for fully vaccinated full-time employees.
I mean, I know, I, I argue even with members of my own family, uh, sometimes about vaccinations and stuff like that. Uh, and they're still members of my family. And I always think that there's going to be hope for them eventually. But at the same token, um, if he was an employee, if I had a brother who's an employee of the town of Spencer and he just happened not to be vaccinated, I don't think we can just say that they're not entitled to time to, to recover.
A- as written, uh, this, this as written is partially a, a way to incentivize vaccinations for staff.
I know, well, I know.
As a public health goal.
I know.
And keep in mind this too.
But I, I don't think that, I don't think that's by purpose.
You're a veteran like I am, listen, listen, hear me on this part. You know, when we went into the military, they gave us those during booster shots, right? Whether we wanted them or not, right? And they only did it because, they only did it because we chose to go into that. We chose to work for the United States Army. And when we chose to do that, we, we knew that they were going to hit us with that shot. This right here, from what I'm reading now, is saying you chose to work here. You don't have to work here and I know you get to choose on how you want to take your shot. But if you expect for the town of Spencer, community people to be paying for you to stay at home because you contracted a disease that may or may not be effective with the shot, it doesn't matter. It's what's going on right now. I bet you can't go overseas on a plane without your, your vaccination shots now. I mean, it's not something that one person started up, this is going all over the world. It's called a pandemic for a reason. It didn't just start in one part of the United States and one part of the, over here in this one country, it's all over. So therefore, bringing it back to Spencer, if you choose to work in Spencer, better to have it and not need it than need it and not have it. And if you try to get money off of my taxpaying money, at least it looked like you made an effort to try not to get the disease.
So to make that leap, I think you have to go a little further and say, then, then you require all employees of the town of Spencer to do that for me.
No, because this is the choice, Bob, this is the choice. As opposed to requiring, this is the choice. And so, you know, Ms. Hovis, the comment you made, they have a choice whether or not they work here, right? But we're not even asking them to make that choice. We're giving them a choice, if they want to have access to the two weeks of COVID leave, it's paid leave, then we're saying, get the, become fully vaccinated. And we're giving them that choice, right? So we're not even asking them to choose their job between it. We're not requiring them to get vaccine. What they're choosing is what amounts to be an additional level of health insurance by getting vaccinated.
Otherwise, they would have to take normal sick leave.
Correct, right. Makes sense.
And, and Mayor, while you're talking about this, the one thing that this doesn't cover, um, that I think the board should consider are those who are moving towards full vaccination. And they have one shot and they're waiting for the time period to get the second shot, whether they can avail a partial benefit, um, because they're in the process of doing it. And so I think that's one, so if you're, if you're halfway through, you get five days, uh, whatever you choose, but not the full amount, but it's, 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 this doesn't address it, I think you probably should consider.
That's a good point. Because I know quite a few people that's happened to, they've gotten the first vaccine and then they got sick.
Okay, so do we have to change anything on this, Jay, or what?
I believe another section, you know, could be added, where the one through four is listed, that would say, those who have, are partially vaccinated would be entitled to, uh, X hours, assist it with other measures.
Well, I think it's really all we need to have is.
Yeah, I wouldn't say.
Now for there be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Spencer, that full-time, fully vaccinated employees of the Town of Spencer are entitled to up to an additional 80 hours of town-paid COVID sick leave and full-time, partially vaccinated employees of the town are entitled to up to 40 hours of town-paid COVID sick leave if they meet the following criteria.
And the second section would need to be amended, uh.
Correct.
To, to maybe say, uh, not, maybe not say fully, I guess it could say fully or partially vaccinated. Would, would do that, would you think, just add the word and partially?
Well, you still have meaning that all required shots have been received.
Because that, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm also seeing here is there is a exemption for folks who have a doctor's note. Folks who are not vaccinated but exempted basically by a physician would also qualify.
So perhaps we say the employee is fully vaccinated, in parentheses, meaning that all required shots have been received or partially vaccinating, meaning that at least one required shot had been received at the time the leave required due to quarantine is taken, unless a physician's note is provided. Jay, does that work?
Yeah, or medically exempt with letter from physician.
Correct, right. But basically what we're saying is it applies, if you're fully vaccinated, you've had all your shots, partially vaccinated, you've had one, one or more, and, uh, then that you have a physician's exemption. Does that work, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then what would change in item three, did we say?
The, the words, uh, and is seeking diagnosis, the seeking diagnosis would change to awaiting test results.
Okay.
And the original conversation, it sounded like you may want to add another section.
Yes, or three is recommended to quarantine by a medical provider or health department.
Not whether or not symptomatic.
Right. Okay. All right, with that being said, any other discussion or questions on that?
One clarification, that, the, now therefore, uh, we talked about the medically exempted, we're, we're adding, uh, we're adding some distinction up there between fully vaccinated and partially vaccinated. Uh, I believe perhaps where it says fully vaccinated employees or medically exempt from vaccination or those medically exempt from vaccination.
With letter from physician.
With letter from physician and then continue, those would get the full benefit of 80 hours and those, and then this, add the section about, uh, partial vaccination getting 40 hours.
Yes, that's my understanding. Is that the board's understanding of what we just discussed? Okay. All right, so with those changes, does the board want to entertain a motion on this tonight?
Make the motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing COVID-19 sick leave time for fully vaccinated, full-time employees.
Okay, as amended?
As amended.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Mayor Protem, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? And that is approved. Thank you all, thanks for the discussion on that and, uh, thanks for watching out for our staff. Making sure that they're compensated and that we're trying to keep everybody safe, good work.
Put out in the woods by myself.
I do have a question on that. Peter, when you find out that staff has come in contact with COVID, how is it decided that, what have you been doing now, reference to them? I mean, what, what happens, what, what's the first thing that happened that you do with staff?
And again, it's, it's, I, I think, I can think of only one time where, uh, it, it wasn't something that came from outside of work and they informed us that they had been, uh, and then that, one of those led to us, uh, checking in about those that may have been exposed at work. But, uh, that's, that's what we're doing is, uh, so far, it's, it's mainly been that those people being contacted by others and letting them know they've been exposed uh, and then making sure they then follow up with the health department to get guidance.
And I want to clarify too, that what we just passed is retroactive for anybody that's currently gone through this situation.
So the, uh, the date on the draft was retroactive to June 1st.
Okay, perfect.
And.
Yep.
Thanks for getting that, thank you.
Appreciate the board's support.
All right, and with that, comments from the board members. Mr. Miller, we'll start with you.
Okay, uh, this last week I got a phone call from a high school friend. They graduated from North with me and lived in Spencer all of my life, except for the last 10 years. He really committed to Spencer, but, uh, like I said, he moved away. And he called me and he says, uh, what's going on in Spencer? I said, what do you mean? Because in the past, that could be a lot of. I says, what do you mean? Explain yourself. And I, he said, well, you know, I had some property that my parents left me five years ago, I couldn't give the property. And he said, now I got realtors that are begging to buy that property. And it made me feel good and I went on to tell him about all the things that the town is working on. And he said, well, tell the board and tell the town people that I really do appreciate what they're doing because, uh, I always, I've always been proud of being known as being a Spencer boy. And I appreciate everything they're doing and, uh, made me feel real good. So that's just a little bit of an insight from a friend of mine who's outside of Spencer, but he's seen good days. I got several friends.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Yep, thanks.
Ms. Sledge.
Well, on, on a similar note, um, I had contact with, um, with a realtor from the Salisbury area this week, talking about my dad's property over there. And they actually, as it turns out, he's the gentleman who, um, saw us and has opened the tra- the trailer refrigeration place down the street. And he said that was going very well. He said, I wish, I just wish I had more space. And, um, he said that he appreciated that and they actually own some property here in several properties here in Spencer, uh, one of which has a lot of bamboo on it. And I was able to share some insight with bamboo, so. But it makes me feel good that, you know, that people are noticing it and, and talking about it. Uh, we, I talked to them about the fact that there's a good bit of development going on here in Spencer. And so, uh, I'm, I'm happy to be here. I feel good about what we're doing with the Town of Spencer and I feel like, um, we're, we're serving the people we were elected to serve, so.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Morgan.
To, uh, add to what Steve and Pat have already said, um, I think that, uh, we've come a long way since, uh, in two years, for almost two years. I think people are, I would like to think that people are looking at it set in a more, uh, positive way than they used to. I think things are, are, are changing for the better now with Officer Brown coming aboard and, and all the things that we've got going, uh, new, new houses being built, uh, I just, you know, with COVID, uh, and this is something that, uh, is, is very scary for a lot of people. A lot of people have lost family members. A lot of people have lost family members, friends, uh, classmates, myself included. Um, these are difficult, confusing times. And I hope that, uh, um, that God smiles down upon us and grants us his grace to do the things and, and provide the wisdom that we need to, uh, you know, carry us forward into the future. Uh, I, I hope and pray for good things for Spencer. Um, it's not perfect, uh, it never was. You know, we, we still make a lot of mistakes, but I, I think, uh, uh, I'm sensing, uh, some renewed pride in, uh, in the area that, that was, that was lacking. And I look forward to helping add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Bish.
Having all talked out.
What? You're all talked out. When, since when? What time?
All right.
Nine is nine fifteen.
Okay. Mayor Protim?
I just had a couple of things mainly in connection with the schools. Uh, I did reach out to the principals today by email to try to set up an appointment where I can meet with someone in the school like Christie, who was up here, and see about some specific things that we can do to support the schools. Um, so I'm, I'm planning on that happening before our next meeting. Um, I am also, uh, wanting to implement, if the principals are agreeable, a student of the quarter, not month, because month was tedious. And I think a student of the quarter, and I think we can even, uh, get a meal donated maybe from Pinocchio's for the family, for that student too. So that, that, I talked to Amy about that. And I want to express my sympathy to the family that lost a fourteen-year-old son with that gun tragedy this weekend and to the Salisbury community. And I would like to see, um, our police department order that if the principals are interested in it, um, some kind of gun safety for the family, um, class or some, uh, some kind of presentation. Because that was a horrible thing to happen. And it could happen to anybody's child anyway. And it was just heartbreak. So, I just don't think we can emphasize that enough. One of those mistakes that can be fixed.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. On the, um, student recognition, one of the things I would suggest too, I know in the past we've had, um, those students come into the board meetings with somewhat limited success. That's really asking a lot of those families to have to come in. I think it would be great if we could have representatives from the board in town to actually go to the school and make those presentations. And I think that's more meaningful.
We talked about, we were in the middle of getting ready to do that and COVID struck. So I'm glad you reminded me of that, so presenting in that school.
Right. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Patty's, um, uh, Mayor Protim's secret, uh, comments reminded me of something. The, um, new secret superintendent of schools spoke to the Democratic Party on Saturday, and that will be recorded. So if you want to take a look at it, you certainly would be able to do that by going to the, um, Royan County Democrats Facebook page. But he spoke about, uh, starting, uh, Parents Academy for students, uh, for the, for the communities. And I took some notes about it, uh, when I was watching him the other day. But I think that's something that perhaps Spencer could get involved with. So if you haven't, if you didn't get a chance to see that, I would like to see it. Um, he spoke for about, probably about forty-five minutes, um, on this past Saturday. And it's there on their Facebook, it will be on the Facebook page if it's not already up.
And he presented, I think where else? A couple, a couple, maybe the chamber, yeah, the chamber.
Yeah, and he's doing, um, doing a presentation with, uh, the Power and Partnership this Thursday within, in conjunction with the chamber.
Right. Okay. Very good. All right. Well, uh, I don't have, have a lot. Uh, one item is I did participate in the, uh, quarterly mayor's roundtable meeting with the, uh, Chamber and their Government Affairs Committee last Friday. Uh, I participated, uh, remotely as, uh, I was not able to be there in person, unfortunately. I thought I was going to be able to. Um, but just kind of reiterating what several of you have mentioned, it makes me really, really proud to get up there and, and, you know, I, I don't try to be boastful, but when, when we're giving the updates on what Spencer is up to, it makes me very proud of what we are accomplishing and, and what, where our town is moving. So, um, that's to the hard work of our staff and to the commitment of each of you. So thank you for that. Uh, the other thing is just to reiterate, maybe as Sam kind of mentioned, these are crazy times. Um, we've heard all sorts of words like unusual, unprecedented, and so on and so on. And, you know, the reality is every generation before us has dealt with something like this, whether it be a world war, whether it be, uh, the Twin Towers and the attack, whether it be a flu pandemic, whether it be the Great Depression. And so the reality is generations have, have dealt with these types of things, and this is something new. But the reality is that great leaders arise in how they respond to these events. And I think the work that each of you are doing and responding to it by keeping our focus on our town, regardless of the, the winds of politics and everything twirling around us outside of Spencer, we're continuing to be committed to what we're trying to do here. And, you know, two years ago, we never would have imagined we'd have been in the situation we're in. But we had goals two years ago. And if you look back on those, we're continuing to make progress and push towards achieving those goals, despite what we've been thrown in the past year and a half or two years. So kudos to each of you, Peter, Stacy and the staff, uh, for all that y'all are doing. Uh, this is a really, really tough time to be in municipal government with everything going on. And, uh, I'm just appreciative that we get to work with great people on this board and with our town staff and that we continue to move Spencer forward. So thank you all. And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda, uh, unless there is a need to go into executive session this evening. All right, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion that we adjourn.
There's a motion by Mr. Morgan, is there a second?
Certainly.
Second by Mr. Bish, all in favor? All right, all opposed? If we stand adjourned, thank you all.